I will call a meeting, first of all, let me say good morning to everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order today. It's Thursday, November 7, 2019. It is just after 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street. We're also live streaming and we're on the Government Access Channel if you get Charter. Can we have a roll call, Aubrey? Just, I know this kind of seems like a formality, but go ahead.
That's okay. Supervisor Giomi?
I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Also here.
Supervisor Begwa?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
Here, thank you, Aubrey. Okay, Nick, good to see you on Halloween. Your kids are great, man. Get us started off on the right foot today, Nick.
Yeah, my kids are some of the best in Carson if I do say so myself.
Yeah, so they eat all the candy?
Oh, of course, of course. I almost brought them back over to your house afterwards so that you could entertain them.
Should have.
Yeah. Let's pray together. Psalms 100 says, "Shout joyfully to the Lord all the earth. Serve the Lord with gladness; come before him with joyful singing. Know that the Lord Himself is God; it is He who has made us, and we are not ourselves. We are His people, the sheep of His pasture. So enter His gates with thanksgiving, and His courts with praise. Give thanks to Him and bless His name; for the Lord is good, and His loving kindness is everlasting, and His faithfulness is to all generations." We pray, God, for our community. We ask, Lord, that you would be near those in our community, our town, and our area, Lord, that are struggling in this time of their life. We ask that you would give them comfort and grace. We pray, Lord, that you would bless them and encourage them in unique and special ways. We also ask, Lord, that you would give these members of our leadership team wisdom as they decide many different things today as well as in the future days. I pray that you would be with them, that you would guide them, and that you would fill them with courage to do what is right at the right time. May you bless our community and keep it safe, we pray, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, thank you for doing that. Sharon, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're all still standing, folks, this coming weekend is Veterans Day, that's Monday. It's also the Marine Corps birthday on Sunday. Let's just have a moment of silence and a moment of reflection about what our veterans, current and those who have passed on, have done to help make the United States the greatest nation on earth. So we'll just take a moment to reflect. Thank you very much, okay, thank you. All right, well now move on to public, item five, public comment. Publics invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body. Public comment, anybody want to weigh in this morning? Sharon? Oh, okay, we got all kinds, come on up.
Good morning, Sharon Ross, Capital City Arts Initiative, here to introduce our new exhibition, Faces in Places, and we hope you enjoy the art. It's by nine very accomplished artists from northern Nevada. So we have, we have a mixed media, with painting and sculpture and photography and prints. So I hope you like it. The reception?
They are really great, by the way.
Thank you.
I mean, makes, makes all the difference to the world walking in the room this morning and seeing what you've got on the walls here. That's pretty, pretty good stuff.
Thank you. We're, we're pretty delighted. It was great fun selecting, they brought more work than we needed, so we got to select when we hung the show. Thought that was good.
Very good, very good.
So there's a party with wine in this room. I know you spend a lot of time in here, but if you'd like to meet the artists on Wednesday, December 4th, from 5:00 to 6:30, and they'll do very short talks about their work at that time. Also, the essay I passed out is for Saludos Amigos, our exhibition over at the courthouse. It was an, it was, the artist was in residence for a week before the show opened. We had a lot of community support, cutting all the tissue paper. We had, was 107 hours of volunteer time by 24 different people. The youngest was in eighth grade, the oldest were grandparents. The essay's written by Emmanuel Ortega, who's currently a visiting professor at the University of Illinois in Chicago. So we're delighted to have his participation as well. The exhibition we have over at the Brick is by nine UNR BFA students, that's our student gallery, and we have nine students there. Pretty good show, too. We're pretty pleased with it.
Very good.
And arts and education activities are continuing with high schools, and that's what CCAI is doing.
Very good. Well, you've got a lot on the plate.
Thank you.
A lot on the plate, looking good.
Thanks so much for all your support.
All right, Sharon, all right.
Bye.
You're going to be there on the Mayor's Art Award next, is that next Friday?
The 15th.
15th, next Friday.
Yeah, next Friday, okay. Yes, we'll see you there. That's a great, great event.
I'm such a, I'm such a great artist, I haven't the faintest idea, but we'll be there.
We'll see you, okay, thank you.
All right. Other public comment, come on up. How are you this morning?
I'm very good.
Oh, man, okay, all right.
I'm surprised. Rex Jennings, for the record.
Gotcha.
I'm here on behalf of my brother again, Todd Jennings, because he claimed to be the mayor pro tem at the beard contest. And Carson City was voted most bearded community, so he asked me to bring the plaque.
Very good, wow.
Okay, so.
So did you, what'd you win?
I didn't enter this time, I thought it was rigged because Stinky keeps beating me out for scruffiest, so.
Isn't that the second time in a, in a row that we've won that? Didn't we win last year?
Yes, yes, and this is the second time in a row. I've had to come back and do this for my brother. He, he's a special ed teacher at the high school, so he couldn't get off, so.
Just a cute story, when I was first mayor, Carson City won, that was a while ago now, won the beard contest, and news reporter came up and asked, Carson news reporter came up and asked me, he said, you know, how'd you, you know, why, we were up against Story County, and I said, how come Carson City beat out Story County? I said, we got, we have younger beards down here.
And I'll tell you, they got mad at me up there in Story County. So I liked bringing this up.
Very good, come on up. Wonderful, thanks Rex, all right, look at that. Pass that around, pass it back. Any other public comment this morning? Anybody want to weigh, anybody want to weigh in? I don't see anybody, okay, let's, hang on a minute. Let's take up approval of the minutes, possible approval of the minutes of October 17, 2019. There's one, there's a couple corrections here, so, want to start, who wants to start?
I move to approve the minutes of October 17, 2019, with a correction on item 12 indicating that there were no consent items.
There's a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, let's see if it comes up here, let's see, where is it? Electronic voting come up?
Not yet.
Not yet.
She.
You got us? All right, just do it for us, okay? It was unanimous tomorrow, so do it, so we can go on here. All right, let's take up item number seven, possible action, the adoption of the agenda. Any changes, city manager?
Yes, we are going to have to pull item 17A. There is a slight publication error, so that will have to be brought back to the next meeting.
Okay, let's.
It was the second reading of an ordinance.
Okay, so we're going to pull 17A, all right? Any other changes? All right, board members, anything? Anybody? All right, then we'll take a motion, well, let me just say it like this, unless there's objection, we will take the agenda as posted with the exception of item 17 Alpha, which will be held for a future meeting. Let's now go on to the consent agenda. Anybody in the audience want anything pulled off the consent agenda for individual discussion? I don't see any board members, want anything pulled off? Anybody?
Ready for motion?
Want to take a look?
Motion?
We okay, motion's in order.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, carried, okay. I still don't see the electronic one up here, maybe I'm...
Nope, none of us have it.
None of us have it, so, okay, tomorrow, you got to... You vote for us there.
Just vote well.
Just vote well. Okay, let me see. Okay, let's go now to item number 15. This is city manager, this is for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of John Giomi as the public guardian for a four-year term beginning November 7, 2019 through November 6, 2023, and to set the starting compensation at $75,000 a Stacy, you want to give a disclosure?
Sure. NRS 281A420 requires me to disclose the conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have, when I have a disqualifying conflict. John Giomi, who's being recommended for appointment to the position of public guardian on this agenda item, is a distant cousin of mine, far outside the third degree of consanguinity. I do not have a commitment in a private capacity to him, and while I'm making this disclosure for full transparency, my independence of judgment in this matter is not affected by my distant familial relationship to John, and I do not have a conflict, a conflict of interest, therefore I will be voting on the matter.
All right, all right. Nancy, you want to take from here?
So we had our public guardian resign on October 24th, and as you all know, back in August, we held interviews, and during that process, there were several highly qualified candidates, with John Giomi being one of them. He's been the case manager and the deputy public guardian since December of last year, and he's been the glue that, that has held that office together during the various transitions that we've had. He has over 10 years of guardianship experience and a background in accounting and law, and today I'm recommending to the board that he be appointed as public guardian for a four-year term.
Board discussion, anybody? Public, let's go, public comment, anybody? I think we can do that here. Uh, hang on, just, yeah, but, come on up, I don't want to get too deep into the public comment because it's individual is here, but that's okay, fine.
Thank you, Mayor and, and Board of Supervisors. Just a question on that four-year deal, would there be a, a raise or a consideration for pay increase? And what is the initial payments now to a guardian?
The initial payment?
Yeah.
I don't know what the current, current one is, but Nancy, do you know?
The salary will be $75,000 in a year. It'll start there, and then he'll go in the regular compensation plan.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Danny, okay. Any other folks want to weigh in? John, I don't want to put you on the spot, so I just want to be careful how we say things here. All right, motions in order.
I move to appoint John Giomi as the public guardian for a four-year term beginning on November 7, 2019 through November 6, 2023, and to set the starting compensation at $75,000 per year.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion, discussions in order.
I just want to welcome you to the long-term minimum four-year, oh, work on the public guardian. We don't expect to see you back except for glowing reports.
You want to say anything, John? Oh, wait a second, we got, we got a motion in place, further discussion? Seeing and hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Thank you. Now you want to say something?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since July 1st, Miki Garcia, Claudette Springmeyer, and a volunteer who also helps with this, Barbara Craveman, who are all in the third row back here in police stand, have been working very diligently to keep this office going because we've been short-staffed, and without them, we would have really had some difficult problems. We've gotten the banking under control totally, everything is the way it should be. We're visiting, because of Barbara, we're able to visit all of our clients monthly like the, our ethics, our standard of ethics require, and we have a very nice team, looking forward to hiring someone else. Thank you for your confidence, and I think that this, this department follows exactly what invocation today talked about, and we try to give strength and hope to those that are in need, because all of our people are in that situation. And so it's, it's gratifying to be able to help those that need help, and we really appreciate your allowing us to continue doing this together as we, we really feel strongly about what we do. Claudette used to be the public guardian in Douglas County, and I worked with her extensively there, so we're very pleased. Miki has been the glue with the financial side, and it's just been wonderful. I really appreciate the confidence that Nancy has shown in us, and thank you so much.
Very good, well, John, as you well know, the, the job of guardian is a, really, just say it mildly, is an important position, is an important function of Carson City. We look forward to working with you to make sure that those things all run smoothly for the benefit of your protected persons.
Thank you.
All right, John, thank you, all right. All right, now we'll take up 15B. This is a presentation and update by the Nevada Association of Counties regarding NACO activities and legislative matters. There she is. We welcome Dagny Stapleton, who's the executive director of the, of the Nevada Association of Counties. Dagny?
Good morning, thanks so much, Mr. Mayor, and supervisors, thanks so much for having me here today and allowing me to give a presentation on behalf of NACO. NACO is the statewide organization whose members are all 17 of Nevada's counties, and we want to thank Carson City for your membership in NACO. These are our current officers, so what I'll do today is provide you an update about the organization and our activities, and then also a legislative update. And these are our current officers. Our current president is Lander County Commissioner Pat Waits. She'll be succeeded in, on January 1st by Humboldt County Commissioner Jim French. And our board is made up of at least one representative from all 17 of Nevada's counties, and the mayor is your representative on our board, and we want to thank him for his engagement with NACO. He's a great asset on our board and very engaged on behalf of Carson City. NACO's executive committee is made up of our officers as well as an at-large member. And also the NACO board includes our affiliate members, those statewide associations representing your other county elected officials, so for example, clerks and treasurers. Each of those organizations presidents have a non-voting seat on our board. This is our mission, and we were created in 1924, so we're coming up on 100 years. We're enabled in statute in NRS 244, and we support cooperation and coordination amongst Nevada's counties. Nevada's counties, small and large, have a lot of common issues because of all the things that counties are responsible for doing, so no matter how large or how small, we always find things to find, to work on, common challenges, to find common ground on. Carson City, of course, has a unique designation in Nevada as Nevada's only consolidated city-county. So regardless of your makeup, our staff are four, we have only four, but we work hard to be nimble and support and provide resources to Nevada's counties.
Well, I can tell you, I know how hard you, you folks work over there. I see you're everywhere, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our board meets once a month, at our September and October board meetings, just an example of some of the things our board's been working on. We discussed an update on opioid litigation, there's an economic, baseline economic assessment project being done for each of Nevada's counties to find basic demographics and economic characteristics. We're partnering on that with Cooperative Extension and the university, so that's an exciting project. We also discussed lack of funding increases from the legislature for cooperative extension. We discussed a proposal to address overpopulation of wild horses and burrows, and the board approved an actuarial study of county Medicaid match assessment costs. We also work to provide information to our, to our members at NACO. Our annual conference took place at the end of September, was hosted by Washoe County. We had a great turnout, a number of educational sessions, speakers, and networking opportunities. Washoe County, the host county, worked hard on putting together, on assisting us in putting together informative and relevant panels. We talked about county fiscal issues, we gave federal and state political updates, we talked about cybersecurity, criminal justice reform, and county roads. All the PowerPoints and information from those panels and educational sessions at our conference can be found on our website. Finally, the NACO board has approved, Churchill County is the host of the 2020 NACO conference, so we hope to see you all in Fallon the week of November 16, 2020, after the election, before Thanksgiving. We also provide educational workshops throughout the year. The board just approved those at their August meeting. There will be a workshop coming up on December 6, which will be on, will provide a detailed overview by bill of the changes that counties need to make as a result of laws passed in the 2019 legislature. So all those bills that require that you have to take some action or do something will go through that list. Then in 2020, we'll host workshops on how and why to write a county water resources plan. There was a change at the legislature also requiring that, if counties don't have them. We'll do a workshop on Nevada's open meeting and public records laws, including recent changes on those, and we'll do a workshop on the newly created oversight of public defenders in Nevada and how that is all going to work. And then prior to the 2021 session, we'll do a workshop on how a bill becomes a law, tips for advocating on behalf of your county for county commissioners and staff. Our website is a valuable source of information, we've got all sorts of information on there as well as information about our meetings and news relevant to counties. And then finally, NACO provides advocacy on behalf of counties. One of the most important ways that we do that is at the Nevada Legislature. We are there almost every day during the legislative session, one of us is there every day, monitoring and tracking bills that may affect counties. Turns out to be about half the bills that come out in some way affect county government administration in Nevada. So we work closely with our members during session, also county lobbyists and other stakeholders. Also, leading up to the legislative session during the interim, we work to develop and maintain relationships with legislators so that we know them once we get to the legislature. Also, we work to provide them with information on county priorities and what counties do. A lot of those folks do not come up through local government, so don't have that experience or knowledge, and so we work hard to try to educate them on all the different things that, that counties do. During the interim, we also follow regulatory hearings as well as interim committee hearings, which there are many. This interim, we'll be watching regulations for bills that were enacted in 2019, during the 2019 session, as well as discussions on Indian defense and prevailing wage. Also, this interim, we're planning a rural tour for legislators. This is something that hasn't been done for a decade or two, but as I understand, used to be done for legislators, and so NACO's decided, we worked on getting a sponsor and to gather some resources to be able to, to do that again, and the goal is, my battery's running low. The goal is, since the majority of the legislator, the legislature is now, from Clark County, a lot of those folks don't have a lot of knowledge of the rural, so the goal is to get some of those southern Nevada legislators out into the rural, take them on a tour, talk to county commissioners, talk about things like what challenge, challenges are in the rural counties, what the, what the key industries are, and then of course to talk about, you know, and give on-the-ground examples of the things that counties do. So we'll work on doing that this winter, and hopefully to do that as soon as the weather gets nice this spring. We also keep in regular contact with our staff from Nevada's congressional delegation. We travel to DC each year to talk with our representatives about county issues. In 2019, we discussed issues relating to Medicaid funding, grants used in county jails and for behavioral health programs, the federal grants that come to counties, payment in lieu of taxes payments, and various public lands issues, including military withdrawals, sage grouse, and we also talked about transportation issues. We also work on statewide issues that affect counties. One that we always pay close attention to that we've been working on over the last couple years is the Cooperative Extension Program. NACO's position regarding Cooperative Extension is to ensure that counties have a voice in consideration of the fact that counties are the largest funder of that program in Nevada, not the university. A penny comes from each county to fund that program, and so to make sure that we have a voice and that, that, that role and participation by counties in Cooperative Extension is recognized. Also, we've had promises for the last few years to increase university funding for extension and, and for them to request additional funding from the legislature. Didn't quite happen last session. President Johnson will be at our NACO board meeting next week to talk about their preliminary conversations for the 2021 session about how they're going to look for additional funding for extension. NACO also represents and makes appointments to a number of statewide committees, seven of which are created by state law. There's all sorts of statewide committees that we've got NACO members and appointees on, the Committee on Local Government Finance, Health and Human Services Grants Management Advisory Committee, the Open Meeting Law Task Force, just to give you an example. Finally, about four years ago, we hired a staff person dedicated to natural resources and public lands issues on behalf of counties, and we work on a variety of issues in this arena. NACO's been an ongoing stakeholder regarding the greater sage grouse land use plans that the BLM and Forest Service have created and created amendments to, as well as on the Fallon military withdrawal, a number of Endangered Species Act issues, including the Bay State sage grouse and the California condor. We've also been involved in wild horse and burrow issues. We have a subcommittee that works on natural resources and public lands issues if there's any interest that's open to any commissioner, supervisor, or county staff person that would like to attend. It's not going. Oh, here we go, okay. I've got a legislative update for the board today. Oh, gosh, hold on. Now how do I go back? What's that? Okay, got it. Okay, that'll be next. So the Nevada Legislature adjourned on June 3rd. NACO's deputy director, Vincent, who has the flu today, so I apologize that he's not with me, as I said, we were there pretty much every single day, watching and working on the many bills that affected counties. The general overview of the session is that when we started, many of the conversations that we had with the NACO board and our legislative committee was that there were a lot of things that would have had significant impact on Nevada's counties, especially a fiscal impact, but also on county operations. We worked hard on a number of fronts, and I'll give an overview of some of those, and together with other county lobbyists, as well as the cities and stakeholders from business and others, we worked to walk back a lot of these bills, and in the end, we can say that we came out of this last session much better than we thought, much better off than we had initially feared. We met with legislative leadership as well as the governor during session on our high-priority bills. And also, we're very happy to report that NACO gets five bills every, for every session, and we actually had six. We requested a legislator carry one for us, and we got five out of our six bills passed and signed by the governor, so that was a, a big accomplishment for us. The NACO board has a legislative subcommittee that meets weekly during the legislative session and then less frequently leading into session to develop NACO priorities. That committee is very important to get feedback on bills, to get the information that we need in order to represent counties well at the legislature. So that committee is very important to us, both, both the mayor and the city manager participated occasionally on that committee, so we appreciate that. Again, that's a committee that's open to any commissioner, supervisor, or county staff if you'd like to designate, so you're welcome to participate in that if you'd like, just let us know. So I will go over the six NACO bills briefly, as well as a few other highlights from the session for you, and I have provided a summary, which I believe is in your packet, it's something we do after every session, just outlining each of the bills that affects counties and an action you have to take.
That's a great summary, by the way.
Thank you.
It's well done.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And we're going to be going off that for our workshop on December 6, but we'll go into even more detail on the six. We also have a bill tracker, which our legislative committee and our board sees, so if you're interested in that, we can also share that with you, it's got more detailed, thank you, more detailed information on all the bills. So our five bills, AB 21, this provided a solution to the problem of smaller county boards, I don't know if there's any of these in Carson City, but, okay. Basically, it allows you to take a board that can no longer meet a quorum and make it an appointed board, and so the rural counties now have that authority. SB 12 enables funds from the county 911 surcharge. Do you guys assess a 911 surcharge? Okay, I'm sorry that I didn't know that before I got here. Now you can use your funds, your revenue from that, to conduct a audit, an audit of all the funds you receive. So some counties have found that they aren't, whether it's communication with the providers or whatever, there's so many providers that for each one of those numbers, phone lines, you may not be receiving all the revenue you're entitled to. Those studies are expensive to conduct, so now you can use your 911 funds, it's an authorized... Those studies are expensive to conduct, so now you can use your 911 funds, it's an authorized use, to do an audit and make sure you're getting all that money. SB 13, it enables all counties to create a nonprofit organizations in times of emergency. So, the idea for this bill came up following the 1-October tragedy down south. There was need for a county authority to create a nonprofit. They had donations streaming in from across the state and across the country, and they found that they didn't have that authority to be able to take that money in. And so, when we discussed this with our Board, we heard from some of the other counties and the rural counties too, that yes, it's something they've thought about. If an emergency ever happened like that, they would need an organization to be able to take that money in and then be able to distribute it fairly to the victims. So, counties now have that authority to create a 501 of some sort for, specifically for times of emergency. SB 48, the rural diesel tax bill, I know you're familiar with this one, so I won't go into it too much. You are now enabled to vote to assess a five cent diesel tax in your county.
How does the five cents get set?
Because currently, counties have the authority to enact and collect five cents of gasoline tax, which currently comes back to the county, so it's sort of actually philosophically a tax parity issue. You have that authority, counties get five cents from gasoline, you actually get a little more than that, but your county option, and so this is, so that you have that same option for diesel tax in the rural counties. Any other questions on that? The fifth NACO bill, one that, the one that did not pass was to make a change to the primary election system to ensure that races, including those for county commission, cannot be determined in the primary. So, if there's candidates that file from only one party, then whoever wins goes on to the general automatically instead of the top two, so we had a bill to change that back to the way that it was. This is the second session that that bill was introduced. We got a little further, we got it out of the First House, at least to the Second House, so, but we didn't get it all the way this session. Finally...
Hang on, I'm going to dagney.
What's the general opposition to that?
I think it's political. I think it's who benefits and who doesn't in their particular races. So, there were some, you know, leadership on the Assembly side was very supportive, in the Senate they were not, so that may change next session. Lastly, NACO worked with Senator David Parks to get a Government Affairs Committee bill introduced to make reforms to the Office of Public Administrator. So, SB 460 allows counties to make the Office of Public Administrator an appointed position, so you could pass an ordinance to take that from elected to appointed, and that's for the rural counties only. So, then a couple of high priority issues I want to touch on. The first one is public records. There were numerous bills this session that dealt with reforms to public records laws, one that we worked with others and managed to kill, which would have required, we believed, very onerous reporting for counties, was AB 371. There was a more comprehensive bill that did pass, and that's SB 287. That legislation began with some things that I think local governments were not comfortable with, including $100 a day fines on an individual staff member who would be responsible for filling a public records request if they did not fill a public records request or were found to not have done that correctly, additional fines of up to $250,000 on counties, and then also eliminating the ability of counties to determine what a public record is. So, there was a compromise that was brokered by NACO, county and city law, and county and city lobbyists that retained the authority to protect a citizen's right to privacy, we said, by determining what was and was not a public records. Coroner's records were a good example of that. And counties can still recoup your cost for especially large public records requests, and then monetary penalties were included in the final compromise if counties don't comply with the law, but you do have to go to court to get those penalties imposed. There were changes to prevailing wage. The biggest change was lowering the threshold for which public works jobs prevailing wage applies to. That threshold was at 250,000 in 2015, it's now back down at 100,000, so those projects now, you're required to pay prevailing wage. Additionally, there was a provision added through SB 207 requiring the use of apprenticeships on prevailing wage jobs. There is, however, a waiver process included in that bill, so if there aren't apprenticeships available, the county can't apply for a waiver, and NACO did work with the Labor Commissioner, had a meeting with them, and I believe your Public Works Director attended that too, to talk through that waiver process to try to, you know, get a sense of whether it was something that was going to be very onerous or fair for local governments if they needed to use that. We do think it's a workable process, and the Labor Commissioner will have a workshop at her office on November 18th on that waiver process for anyone who would like to attend, and I know your Public Works Director is aware of that. Some good news on prevailing wage, a bill that NACO supported, SB 243, provided for four regions for determining the prevailing wage, so now the rural areas of the state, although I believe Carson City is still with Washoe County, have a separate, there are separate regions for determining prevailing wage. One of the biggest issues that we worked on this session was workers' comp issues, and I guess the summary, there was a number of bills related to workers' comp issues. The unions had a significant number of bills that we believe collectively would have constituted a total overhaul of the workers' comp system in Nevada, with significant cost impacts to counties. We worked closely with Clark County, that has a lot of expertise and really took the lead and helped a lot on this issue, but NACO worked hard as well. We talked about a lot of these bills and the impacts with the Governor's Office, as well as legislative leadership. In the end, there was pressure to dial those bills back, and that happened. Some of them died, of the ones that got through. We do think it won't be the, it's not the dramatic overhaul we feared, although you're probably already feeling the impact of some of those changes through cost increases. AB 492 expanded workers' comp coverage for PTSD and allowed unlimited temporary benefits for PTSD. SB 215 expanded workers' benefits related to the coverage of cancer for firefighters, so it expands that coverage to arson investigators and trainers, and it expands the list of cancers, as well as creates a lifetime eligibility for those who work over 20 years. So, that benefit was significantly expanded, and that's the one that probably has had, will have the biggest impact on counties going forward. Indigent defense reform was passed this session. AB 81 creates a new regulatory oversight body to oversee county public defense in Nevada. NACO and others worked very hard on this issue during the interim and also during session to ensure that there was still an ability to limit county costs for reforms related to public defenders, as well as to make sure that counties had a voice, since I know, not Carson City to a lesser extent, but the majority of the counties all provide that service themselves, and so counties needed to have a voice on that, and I know you pay a substantial amount to the state for your public defense. I don't know how much detail you want me to go into on this. I want to recognize the Mayor for his role working on this issue. He, we worked on bill drafts together and language, and now that that new oversight board has been formed, there's actually a majority of county, the majority of the seats on that board are county folks, which is very good for us. And that board has met once, and they elected the Mayor as Chair of that board, and so we want to thank him for his willingness to work so hard on that issue on behalf of all counties. It's an issue that'll affect all counties substantially. So, of course, he's one of our appointees, along with three others.
Four appointees, NACO has four, right?
NACO has four.
Me, Joni, Joni Eastley, Lurinda Wickman, and...
Dave Mindiola, Humboldt County.
Mindiola, right.
So, we've got strong representation from rural counties, strong representation, folks who we know who've been working on this for a long time, from Clark County, from their county manager's office, and then Washoe County Assistant County Manager. So, we've got very strong representation from counties on that. Mr. Mayor, are you interested in me giving a summary, any additional summary on how that's going to work, or should I move on?
Say that again, please.
Do you want me to give any additional summary on how that's going to work, the indigent defense reform?
Give it a shot.
Okay. So, what the bill said is that there's a new State Department form to oversee and set standards for indigent defense, so that that State Department will oversee your public defenders in every county. That then, State Department is overseen by a board, which again has 13 members, seven of those are county appointees, so we have the majority on that. They are required to set standards for the provision of indigent defense, so potentially things like caseload and training for public defenders. I know that Carson City uses the State Public Defender, so that office now will be under the regulatory oversight of the department and the Board. Everything that the Board approves by regulation will have to have final approval by the legislature, so that's the checks and balances. One important thing that we really fought for in this bill is that the Board is required to establish a cap for the maximum amount that a county should pay to meet the new standards. So, that's the way that we found to say, hey, the state may require you to pay, to increase the number of public defenders, they're going to require that the system for indigent defense in Nevada is improved, but it is a state responsibility, and so in terms of the impact and cost to counties, we needed a cap to ensure that the state really should be the one to pick up those new costs, because counties have been paying for it for so long. The US Constitution says it's a state responsibility, and that's been upheld in the courts, and so this cap is important. It's a way for us to sort of point back to the state and say, hey, these reforms are going to cost counties money, the state should be paying for the new costs. Staff in the new department will oversee then and come out to the counties and take a look at how they're providing their indigent defense, what kind of contracts they have. Counties would have to comply with those standards, but also, and also come up with a plan to do so, however, the costs to do that will be quantified. And then, the other thing that's in the bill is that those additional costs that might be required to meet the new standards, they have to be put in the state budget for the Office of Indigent Defense. So, that's another mechanism. In addition to the cap on the cost that counties pay, all the new expenditures have to be put in the state, in a request for the state budget that goes to the legislature. So, the Executive Director of the Office has to ask the legislature for that money and not the counties, so. Any questions on that? I'll move on.
I think we're going to have a meeting in December or first part of January, no, nobody meeting, because the Executive Director just got selected by the Governor, so we'll get it off the ground here. You know, and you know, it's been my position all along, that we've been paying, county's been paying for the public defender or indigent defense for a long time, and my reading of the Constitution and the law is that that's a state obligation, of which, you know, in my view, they could step up more in terms of the financial side of things to recognize that it is their obligation, it is the state's obligation, okay?
Yep, that's the...
So, I'll carry that into the meetings on the Indigent Defense Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that's the bottom line. How do we, how do we reduce costs or prevent additional costs to counties, and that's going to be the fight going forward. The ACLU sued the state on this, that's why finally there was some reform made, and like I said, NACO, along with the Mayor and others, have worked, been working on this issue for years and worked really hard on it this session. Finally, I just want to touch really briefly on county assessments. So, the state budget process is something that we watch closely throughout the legislative session. Your assessments are those programs or costs that the state requires that you pay, costs that we say have been pushed down to counties. Overall, there were two increases this session, an increase to what you pay for child protective services, as well as for the Medicaid match. Medicaid match is the big one, however, Carson City's at your cap, so you're already paying your maximum for your Medicaid match assessments.
Eight cents, right?
It's a good thing for you guys. Yep, it's equivalent to eight cents of your, right. And so, your overall assessments did not increase this session because you're at that cap, however, the CPS costs did increase, and that was a surprise. It's something that we're continuing to work with the Department of Health and Human Services on to get a better understanding of why those costs went up and what that's going to look like going forward, so we're continuing to work on that. I just have a couple more slides, Mr. Mayor. Any questions on legislative stuff before I move on?
Go, shoot, jump in.
Dagney, on AB 164, legislation makes changes to state laws regarding the advertising of cannabis.
Oh, yeah.
If a county has an ordinance regulating advertising of cannabis, then content can be regulated, but only if the county ordinance sets forth specific prohibited content. My understanding was that the original state law had prohibitions in it for advertising, one of which was the use of graphics of the cannabis leave or plant, but I see billboards all over the place where they're... So, what is the point of this legislative change if there's no enforcement?
Just a small...
That's a good, that's a, that's a great question, and I think, and I think it's in part to address issues in Clark County. You know, the folks that were pushing this is to address issues in Clark County, because I think that the county takes a really active role down there and has a really, they have a really tight ordinance and a really active business license department, and they were interested in doing more regulation on the content of those signs, and I think that's regulated more closely down there, and so this was the industry pushing back to make sure that if they do that, they have to pass an ordinance to specifically outline what that content is that they're going to regulate. So, I mean, in a way, it leaves the authority with counties to really address that, which is, you know, a good thing, but there have been some issues on the state level, as we all know.
Then my second question is AB 413. Counties will be required to consider and include a business impact statement on any ordinance. If a county fails to provide disinformation, an affected person can sue to null and void the ordinance action taken by the county. Is that true? And I went, I was on the legislative, four county legislative coalition, I never heard anything about this bill, ever.
That one was on our radar. I believe you already are required to, so this is actually a smaller tweak than it sounds, you already are required to do a business impact statement for any ordinance? I think it just increases the penalties for that?
Correct. Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager, for the record. So, we did concur with the DA's office, and it is something that the city already has in place, so there's no immediate impact to us because we've been, we've been doing that already, and will continue to do so.
Anybody else?
We, we do a business impact statement on every ordinance. No, we don't. We pass ordinances all the time without doing them.
So, if I could just chime in for some clarity here, by statute, local governments are not required to issue a business statement or prepare a business impact statement for every single ordinance, or there are certain statutory exemptions that are provided in law, but the DA's office, of course, we work very closely in hand with the departments in terms of preparing an ordinance and deciding whether or not there's a concurrent business impact statement that needs to be issued at the same time. I think that the minor tweaks in AB 413 are such that it makes it explicit that if there is a lack of business impact statement where it's not statutorily exempted, then that action in terms of enacting the ordinance would be null and void, and then there's also a slight tweak to the time period in which the business impact statement has to be proposed and made public in a hearing at least 10 days before the introduction of the ordinance. However, we've always done it as a matter of course here in this city, where we provide the business impact statement where it's required to be done at the first reading, so there's no problem with running afoul of that additional statutory timeframe. But we're going to continue to monitor this, and we'll work with the Clerk of Quarters' Office and also with the various city departments to make sure that we're always fully in compliance.
Thanks, Dan. And so, our summary of this is probably a little too broad, because you're not required for every single ordinance, it's for those ordinance, right? It's narrowed a little, and I'm sure your DA's office, you know, does it for the ordinance that are, you know...
Scared us, baby.
Yeah, so I apologize for that, because that's, the way that we wrote that is too general, but it does, yeah, create an additional penalty if you don't, for those that you were required to. Any other questions on legislative stuff?
Anything? John, Supervisor Barrett?
No, but just a comment, as a native of Illinois, where Chicago runs the state, and having been in other states where the large cities do, I encourage you to, and your people, to work very hard on the Clark County delegation regarding your rural initiatives, getting them out there, making them understand that one size doesn't always fit all. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Supervisor. Story of my life, I mean, when we're at the legislature, but that's true for, I mean, I hate to say it, it's almost true for Clark County as well, because so few of them understand local government, and our Board, of course, is a majority rural counties, and so Clark County is engaged on our Board, but the majority of counties and, you know, folks that participate are the rural counties, and I'm proud to say that we have a very collaborative relationship with our Clark County folks, which is actually very helpful when we get to the legislature, because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, counties have so many challenges that those are the things that we talk about, and so our Clark County folks help us at the legislature, and, yeah, the rest of the time, we're just trying to educate folks from Southern Nevada about rural and Northern Nevada issues, as well as about county issues, so I appreciate that.
Good. And you had the President of NACO, Lawrence Weekly, from Clark County.
We did. Our President last year was from Clark County, and he was, he was very supportive of all the counties and the rural county issues. It's pretty neat, you know, we're one of the few organizations where you really see, we're truly non- You know, we're one of the few organizations where you really see, we're truly nonpartisan and you really see a lot of collaboration. And again, I think it's because we just have so many issues and challenges that there's not time for that. But yeah, he was a great example of that, very supportive, worked well with all the rural folks and provided leadership that was, you know, general enough that nobody ever felt left out or marginalized.
Good. Go ahead.
So the National Association of Counties, every county in Nevada is a member. This organization has a really strong lobby on Capitol Hill and work on a wide variety of issues that that help counties. They, they really help us on federal issues and we really rely on them for information as well. And we have two representatives on their national board. Their board helps set policy on what they're going to advocate for on behalf of all counties at the national level. Commissioner Kirkpatrick from Clark County, Commissioner Higbee from Lincoln County. There's also a number of national steering committees that the National Association of Counties has and on a wide range of policy issues, education, transportation, environment, public lands. And if there's any interest from any of you on working on a specific policy, you know, national policy area, please let me know. Any of you are welcome to serve on those. Finally, the National Association has a board specifically dedicated to Western issues as well, and we participate on that. Again, we just had our conference in September and please plan to join us next year in Fallon. And one other issue before I close that I just wanted to give a plug for and talk about a little bit, and that's the 2020 U.S. Census. And it's very important for counties to get involved with this if you're interested in doing so. As you know, an accurate census count is important because it determines our federal representation, our representation in the legislature. State of Utah claimed that they lost a seat in the last count because they were undercounted. Nevada could potentially gain a seat this time. It's estimated that approximately $2,000 per person who's counted in Nevada comes back from the federal government to Nevada, not only to the state, but also to counties. So for every person not counted, counted, that's potentially a loss of $2,000. Also, it helps determine the seat tax distribution. So those dollars, some of those dollars come directly to counties. And then Nevada actually has one of the highest hard to count rates in the country. So we have some of the, we have the highest ratio, one of the highest ratios of census tracts that are considered hard to count and that are traditionally undercounted. And that's not just in the urban areas, but in the rural areas as well. So we recommend that every county establish a county-level complete count committee. There are grants available to assist with that. That committee would come up with a plan to do outreach to the people in your county to encourage them to participate in the census and to help them to do so. There are materials to support you in doing that. We've got some of those up on the NACO website on our resources page. There's also U.S. Census staff here in Nevada. We can give you that contact information. And the state also is hiring staff, I believe, two or three dedicated to the rural areas to help, help with census efforts and to help local governments as well. The governor does have a state-level census complete count committee, and I'm the county representative on that committee. So if you have any questions about resources that are available or how to get involved, what you can do, please don't hesitate to reach out. We can help you guys with that. That's all. This is our office, just up the street. We're proud to be here in Carson City. And here's our contact information. Please call us anytime about anything at all. We're here to support you in any way that we can.
Supervisor Stacy, Supervisor Giome.
I'm not going to remember the details of this, but five or six years ago, and I'm going back to your comment about cooperative extension, I believe it was President Johnson who sort of reorganized, much to the chagrin of almost everyone in the-
State.
Yeah, in the state, you know, not the least of which are the employees of the Cooperative Extension Group. So did that reorganization ever get sort of pushed back to the way it was? Or did it, it's still sort of that unfavorable way?
So thank you for the question, Supervisor. That was a big issue for all the counties, urban and rural, and one that we worked a lot on. The proposal was to, instead of having cooperative extension be an independent program under the, I believe it was the Office of the President and the Provost, the proposal was to bring that into the Ag Department, basically, so the College of Agriculture, Biotechnology and Natural Resources. They pushed that through. We negotiated with them on that sort of every step of the way. We asked for a lot of things, including better accounting of how county funds were used, you know, assurances that they were going to work with us, assurances that this program would not get lost in this other college. So it did go through. That was about three or four, three years ago, I think. And because we were so vocal and asked for a lot of things while that transition was happening, I do think that there's been some benefit actually to counties. I think that they have been, the administration has been more accountable on cooperative extension. I think that relationship has improved. Also, the dean of the College of Agriculture is a strong advocate for cooperative extension. What we've seen is in the past, a lack of support for cooperative extension, basically, from the administration. The dean has been a great advocate and he has a good relationship with them. So that's been favorable for us in terms of protecting that program. There's also a new director, Ivory Lyles, who's excellent and is a great advocate. So since that transition and because of our involvement and I think because of the new director and how proactive he is, I would say extension is more organized. I think things are looking up for extension. The only issue is, of course, there's been no additional funding, so counties remain the largest funder. And as I mentioned, the president is coming to the NACO board meeting next week, so we continue to be proactive in holding him accountable for the promises made regarding extension. And then I guess just in summary and answer, you know, to your question, so that happened and it doesn't look like that's going to be undone unless there is really other issues that come up and a continued lack of stewardship, there would probably be an interest in that. But at this point, nobody is talking about taking extension back out of College of Ag.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, it's good that we're watching it or that you're watching it and we all keep an eye on it. I think we sometimes underappreciate the value that cooperative extension brings to our community. They've been a valuable resource, you know, not only in times of non-disasters, but, but they really are beneficial to communities in times of disaster. And yeah, I just, I, so thank you for keeping your eye on the ball. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's one of my favorite things to work on. And you guys each contribute a penny to it, so counties pay for it, too, so.
I'm happy to give two pennies.
Okay. Other questions, Dagny? Well done, Dagny.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Let me tell, a public comment on this. Anybody want to weigh in? I don't see anybody. Thank you. Thank you again, Dagny.
Thank you.
All right. Let's now take up item number 15 Bravo, or no, 15 Charlie. This is discussion and possible action regarding Senate Bill 48, which authorizes Nevada rural counties to implement by ordinance or ballot question a one to five cent diesel fuel tax that could generate approximately $400,000 in revenue annually if implemented in Carson City. Ms. Paulson, you going to do this or is Lucia going to do it?
I'm going to start it out and then turn it over to the pros across from me. So as Dagny just talked about, SB 48 was a NACO-sponsored bill that was passed during the 2019 legislative session. And this bill authorizes the Board of County Commissioners, or in our case, Board of Supervisors, in a county whose population is less than 100,000, to impose a tax on diesel fuel in amount not to exceed five cents per gallon. So the bill provides that a board may not adopt an ordinance to impose the tax unless the ordinance is approved by at least a two-thirds majority of the board, which in our case would be four out of five board members, or a question concerning the imposition of the tax is approved by a majority of the registered voters in a general election, with the next one being in 2020. The ordinance would provide that the tax or any change to the amount of tax would become effective the first day of the second calendar month after the enact, enactment of the ordinance. And that's just for the state to, to get everything set up. If less than a five cent maximum tax is imposed, any subsequent increase to the tax would have to go through the same process, either be approved by two-thirds vote of the board or a majority of the voters in a general election. So this slide provides a breakdown of the existing taxes that are charged for gasoline and diesel sold in Carson City by federal, state and, and the local government. Currently, as you can see, Carson City receives no revenue from the existing diesel taxes that are collected at the pump. It's, it's broken. It goes between the federal and state receive all the taxes. So this slide shows all the current fuel prices for Carson City and some of our surrounding neighbors. In Carson City, a gallon of diesel fuel is currently 20 cents, less than a gallon of gasoline. Gasoline is $3.35 and diesel is $3.15. There are even larger differences between the gas and diesel prices in most of the surrounding cities. In Minden, diesel is 35 cents less. And in Reno Sparks, there's about a 24, between a 24 and 26 cent difference, with Fernley being the only nearby city where the diesel price actually exceeded gasoline by 25 cents. This is the estimated annual revenue that would be generated by a five cent diesel tax. For Carson City, this would be approximately $400,000 annually. Currently, the, the city's annual budget for roads is approximately $4 million with an estimating funding deficit of $15 million. While these proceeds don't come close to, to filling the funding gap, it would represent approximately 10% of, 10% increase in the city's current funding for roads. This was presented to the RTC on September 11th, where they voted four to one to recommend to the board that a five cent diesel tax be adopted by ordinance, not go to a ballot question. The RTC had considered implementing an ordinance initially for approximately three years, then maybe take it to a vote of the people. But they decided that, that this would limit us to pay-as-you-go projects and we would, as we would not have a guaranteed revenue source to issue bonds. And I think that, that's all I had. And I have, Darren is here and Lucia from Public Works, if there's any other additional questions.
Want to add anything, Mr. Public Works, Mr. Transportation?
We're just looking for the money, but it's a policy decision.
Let me ask Lucia if you know, how did the disparity between the Rurals and Clark and Washoe happen? And how come they have it and none of the 15 rural counties do on, on the diesel tax?
The indexing.
Yeah.
Indexing picked up the diesel.
You want to answer that, Dagny?
We'll give you an honorary Public Works badge.
I would love that. I'm a big fan of Public Works. Yeah, you said it's basically the indexing, Supervisor Giome said. So in Clark and Washoe, Washoe County, gosh, it's been, I think, a decade where there was a question to the voters on whether they wanted fuel tax indexing and they included indexing of diesel in there so that they get revenue from diesel. So that passed in Washoe County. Clark County, a few years ago, the same thing. While there was statewide question, it was on in every county to do indexing, but it was county, it was by county individually. So that even though it was a statewide question, it was separated by county. So it passed in Clark. Washoe already had it, so it wasn't on the ballot. It failed in all the Rurals. Clark County got indexing and that included diesel as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Questions of any of the panel members here?
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I know I don't have an answer to this because I've, I've asked, but I just, I, I was really interested in trying to find out what the percentage breakdown was between commercial vehicles, the trucking industry, and how much gas or diesel they used versus smaller vehicles or, or, you know. My sense is, just looking at the volume and the recent, my office is very close to the Maverick that now sells diesel fuel and has a truck stop. And it is constantly busy to the point where Research Way is backed up two or three times a day with trucks waiting to get in to buy diesel fuel there. So my sense is it, it, it seems like it must be higher for the trucking industry, but we can't really find that information. Is that correct?
That's correct. We don't have that information.
You get a pretty good idea from the Lyon County fees up there.
They have trucks.
And after your question, Supervisor, I did, I did stop by Maverick because we, we don't have that data. And I just asked the clerk, I mean, for what it's worth. And she said, oh, we sell way more to trucks. But I, who knows?
I think that falls short on the scientific scale. But, but thank you for trying.
Okay, I don't know. Go ahead. Go on then. John's got a light on there first.
So, so I'm just trying to see on the diesel in the counties that have the tax, it was approved by a vote of the people. The indexing taxes were approved by the people which gave them diesel tax. So I just want to put that on the record, that the people approved it.
My question is just a matter of what the word current-
Hang on a second, John.
Sure.
You want to weigh in on that?
I would just say yes, that is true. But however, that was for indexing, so it's a little bit different. It's not a straight five cents. It's because the indexing increases over time. But on the gas taxes, those were, a lot of those are improved just by commission votes. The equivalent five cent county gasoline taxes are usually not by vote of the people.
Sorry, sorry, John. Go.
Not a problem. I, it's just a little, like, the question is when you said the current, what, what does current mean, like the last six weeks? Because this, it floats.
This was as of yesterday.
Thank you.
It didn't change a whole lot. I had looked at it a week before and it hadn't changed a whole lot.
But if you looked last year, diesel was higher than gas. That, that's-
It moves around.
It moves around a lot.
Okay. Other questions? Anybody from the board on the panel here, of the panel? Anybody? Public comment? Sheriff, come on up or Denny, sit down a minute. Let the sheriff come up. Good morning, Sheriff.
Put the light on there. Thanks, Paul. I'd like to correct Mrs. Paulson, diesel showing, Carson City doesn't get any, doesn't pay any diesel tax. You have, they're back in 19, or in 20, I'm going to say 2015, when the board was asked to consider doing a audit on the, the five cent tax that was approved for when the freeway went in. And this freeway, excuse me, had in its, in place a tax, a tax on all fuels. That included diesel, propane, gasoline, that was supposed to sunset. Now, that never sunsetted because of the finagling by the city officials to keep that, that thing going and diverting the money from the freeway to certain projects in the community. Well, that tax has never sunsetted and they're still being paid five cents a gallon on diesel when they buy it right now. So my suggestion to the board is, is that you incorporate some type of maneuver to go ahead and get the tax, but you use, don't, don't impose it because you're already getting it. If you impose another one, you have got 10 cents a gallon that's being put on diesel tax as opposed to five.
Let's, let's talk about that a minute, Paul. It's an interesting observation. Anybody want to answer that from the staff side?
The, the five cent that you're speaking of, Sheriff, is only on gasoline. And it's, it's not on diesel.
I'm sorry, the, the law doesn't say that. The law says all fuels, all motor vehicle fuels, and that includes propane and diesel, that gas, that nickel gas tax is being collected for the construction of the freeway.
So that, so that hasn't changed the fact that we're not collecting any tax, regardless of what your interpretation of the law says-
My interpretation is the law.
The fact is that we don't collect any diesel tax. We don't receive any. We don't collect it, we don't receive it. That's a fact because otherwise we would have receipts in the bank account, which we don't. That's the fact.
Okay. I'm just telling you what's in the law and whether you're collecting it or not, that's your problem. Because it says you could do that and that was a way of getting around it.
But you said we were getting five cents and we're not.
I'm, I'm just quoting the law as imposing, which that sunset tax never did sunset. And it's- it's continuing on right now, and this community is suffering from a lot of road problems, and it's basically because any money that's been brought in on taxes, road taxes, is being diverted. You should know that better than anybody, Mr. Bonkowski.
Yeah, you know, we've had this conversation about four times now over the years, and nothing has changed.
That's for damn sure.
Right. So let's move on.
What, we don't want to move on? I want to get this thing corrected, where you're not imposing another nickel gas tax on fuels. I know you're telling me you don't have receipts for it. I'm just going by what the law says. Now, you can go ahead and check back, and you can check back to find out if you're getting any nickel gas tax from collections, you know, but it's already, the sunset tax has really been a bugaboo for everybody in this community, because you get complaints every day, or every week I see in the newspaper, why can't you fix our streets? And the reason is because the money that we have for this type of project, you divert for everything else. And that's all I have to say, unless you've got more questions for me.
I think I got it, Paul. Thank you.
Mr. McGrath, can you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, my name is Paul McGrath. I'm a resident of this community for over 60 years.
He's a former sheriff. Other questions? Public comment? Okay, I can't hear you, Denny.
Denny French, Carson City resident, mayor and board. My questions weren't quite that specific, or my objection or objection was not quite so well-framed, I guess. Such has been reviewed, apparently quite a bit. I'm, through what I'm reading, it's not suggesting that this does have a sunset date. I would also like to suggest that I would like this not to, I would like this to go to the voters, as it's not the same in this sense, but this is big, and the use of the money is important. We could always use it, but five cents is a big deal, and there are a lot of commercial rigs that are running, and then there are a lot of personal and public uses of it, the buses and different units of transportation. So a lot of people are going to be affected. We do have a gasoline tax, and I'd like to see that money going to the road repairs and such, and I'm not really feeling that's been happening. But having said that, can you answer my question about how long this tax would be in place?
Depends on what, how it's framed. I think we have three, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have three alternatives that, at least, that say you can, the board here, under a motion, could do nothing, could impose it, could send it to the ballot, or could make changes on the five cents, or make changes on how long it exists.
And the changes on the five cents, would that be between one and five cents, and the cap is five cents?
Yes. If I understand your question correctly.
And it would be no sunsetting and no time base on it? It would go until taxpayers brought objection or changes in financial?
And that depends on what comes out of this board, but it'd be just like any other tax, Denny, any other fuel tax.
Okay, so I thought there were several fuel taxes in the past for gasoline that did have sunsets. No? Did I misunderstand?
Just the one we took, that's, I think, what Sheriff McGrath was talking about that happened in, I think, 2006, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, by board action.
Okay, I had no idea of the dates and such, but it was my understanding, so thank you very much.
Hey, Denny. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see any board. Want to talk about this? Okay. Who wants to talk about it?
All right, I'll start. So, one of the things that we haven't talked about is that a portion, if this is implemented, that a portion of this tax will be set aside to build commercial truck parking lots across the state on the interstates, so that when drivers hit the end of the shift, they have a safe place to pull over and sleep until they can drive again. That portion of the bill was put in there because it, so the truck drivers, the truck-driving unions and their representatives support this bill because of that, and this program would be a template across the country. So other states are watching to see how we roll this out, and if we roll this out, to see if they can copy it, because there's a serious issue with commercial trucks not having places to stop, especially, that's been exacerbated since they were required to go to electronic logs instead of written logs. So that's a critical portion of this, and in large part why this made it through the state legislature. We don't have the ability to print money like the federal government does, and we don't have the ability to decide to create a tax. That responsibility lies with the legislature. Our responsibility locally is to decide or set policy on whether or not we want to implement fees or taxes that are approved by the legislature. In this particular case, as head of the RTC, I am very familiar with the numbers, we have funding for approximately 25% of our funding needs every year, so our road system is falling apart because we're going backwards at the rate of about 75% a year. So although I'm not an advocate of increasing taxes, in this particular case, I have to balance people calling me to say, don't increase our taxes, with the calls I get from people saying, fix my roads. If we're already going backwards to 75% a year on our funding needs, then the only way to begin to solve this problem, and this is not a solution by any means, this is a drop in the bucket, but it's a positive step forward, is to look at multiple ways to generate revenue to try to close that gap. The second issue here is whether or not this should go to a vote of the people. In general, this idea's already been voted on the people, and they voted it down. The Las Vegas model of this was to implement the tax, I believe it was for three years, and then put it to a vote of the people, and the people can vote on whether to sunset it or continue it. That's the model that I favor, would be to implement the tax for either a three- or five-year period, and then put it on the ballot, and let the people decide whether they want to sunset it, or whether they want it to continue. And I understand that Public Works doesn't necessarily support that, or that's not their preferred method of implementing this, because then we can't use it to bond. So that means that we would be kicking the can down the road for that three-to-five-year period to be able to do bigger projects, but it does enable us to at least start making a dent in some of the road repairs that we need, and then the people can see the benefit that they get from it, and then they can make a decision, hopefully a much more informed decision, three or five years down the road, on whether they want to continue that, and the message will be loud and clear at that time, if it gets voted down, that the people do not want us to fix the roads. So that's where I'm at on this. My preference would be to implement the full five cents and put it to a vote of the people either three or five years down the road.
Any other comments, discussion? Lori?
Guess I'll give it a shot. So I want to overall concur with what Supervisor Bonkowski has said. I'm not sure about the three-to-five-years option. I feel very strongly that the public already voted on this issue in Carson City, and so it will be, I just cannot vote contrary to what they voted, and that's really the issue for me. And I realize that the tax isn't identical, that it's not indexing, but we had a clear message, and I do think that the public has a responsibility that says, if you want me to fix the roads, then you have to give me the ability to do so with dollars. I mean, that, that becomes your responsibility. So if you vote a measure down, that sends me that message, that it's not the priority. And so I want to send this to the ballot, because I believe the people already voted, and I don't want to vote contrary. Two-thirds, it wasn't even, it wasn't even close. It was a two-thirds vote against the tax, so I want to send it to a ballot, and I want them to approve it and give us the money to help fix the roads.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to my colleague, to my direct right, I cite the First Amendment. You have every right to be wrong. The deal here is, our roads are in sad shape, and they're going to continue to get worse shape. Our federal legislators haven't stepped up. Our state legislators have only stepped up to the extent of giving us this authority. During the period in which this was before the legislature, I was leaned on by a legislator and told, this will not even come to you if you don't promise that you will put this to a vote of the people. I always resent it when state legislators come and lean on local people. I always resent it when the federal dictates, for example, that you have to wear a motorcycle helmet, or you have to put on a safety belt, or we will stop sending you highway money. So you can all imagine how I feel about current situations that are before us but don't have anything to do with this. I will vote to raise this money because our roads are woeful, and no one's going to step up to do it. I was hired to do this. If people wanted to, they could ask me not to continue next year, although I'm not probably going to give them that opportunity, because at 77, I have other things I might want to do. But this needs to be done, and anybody who doesn't vote for it, that's their right, but I will be voting for it. I don't like the idea of a three-year sunset, because A, I don't like sunsets, and B, we need to bond. We need to fix our roads.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I'll weigh in. I have to say that I am surprised over the last 10 days at how few comments I've had against us outright implementing this. I have had literally one person contact me or approach me about not imposing it at all, and I've probably had four or five people, one of which is someone who just bought a new diesel truck, saying, really, it's time, and we have to do it. And I have to be honest, I'm surprised by that. I had anticipated that my phone would have rung off the hook from people who were opposed to this, and it hasn't happened, and I'm surprised by that. My other sense is that the vast majority of this tax is going to be picked up by the trucking industry, which has already said that they support it. So while I'm very much torn about not imposing an additional tax without a vote, I'm also, as John said, very much cognizant of the fact that roads are the biggest complaint I get, probably the biggest complaint all of us get, in terms of where we spend our money. So I came in here without a thought as to which way I'm going to vote. I don't know right now, depending upon what motion comes up, which way I will vote, to be honest with you. It's, it's that difficult a decision for me, so that's my two cents.
I tend to agree with what you're saying there, Stacy. I guess, you know, where I kind of fall down is that I think it's unfair in our community to have passenger cars or gasoline-powered cars pay the freight for roads, and our diesel folks pay nothing. And I just, I think that inequity is not something we should foster or promote. So, you know, I too believe that, you know, our roads need these funds. Normally, I would say, I agree with what you said, normally, I would say, you know, put it out there to the people, but it's not a broad-based tax. It's a tax, in my view, to correct an inequity, and also to help fund the roads and make sure that we're all funding the roads. I don't know, you know, I might be able to vote for a tax that sunsetted. I'd like to hear the motion on that, so we could debate that, if there is going to be a motion to that effect. But I think that it's up to this board to do something for our roads, period. So, I mean, because it is, I mean, we need, we need help on the roads, and I think we're not alone in that world. So my comments? Okay. Anybody else?
May I add something? I just looked up the NRS and to address what the sheriff had brought up. The five-cent tax that he was talking about imposes a tax on motor vehicle fuel, and the definition of motor vehicle fuel under NRS says the term does not include diesel fuel.
Okay, all right. All right, somebody want to try a motion? Stacy, you want to try a motion? No, I'm kidding you, Stacy. I'm not trying to force you to do that. Don't worry about it, just trying to create a little levity here. Anybody want to try a motion?
I think John should make the motion.
John, you want to try one?
Impose the five-cent tax and no sunset. Does that cover it?
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second for discussion.
There's a second for discussion? Discussion's in order.
And just to be clear, you're moving to approve a five-cent per gallon diesel fuel tax to be adopted by ordinance and not put to a vote at any point, correct?
That's correct, and I would like to have the capability for bonding, because that's the way we really solve this problem, not solve it, but move forward on this problem. The money right now is as cheap as you can get it, and so it's a good time, and let's move quickly. If anybody doesn't understand what's going on with our roads, all you have to do is check and see where we're going to be 20 years from now if we continue falling 75% behind. The roads are going to deteriorate, and it's going to cost more, as the Fram oil filter said. Pay me now, or pay me later.
I suspect that if Lori or I made a motion here, that it would die for a lack of a second, and so thank you for the motion, and I will consider it.
Stacy?
The $400,000 a year in terms of bonding, what does that mean for us?
You took my question.
Great minds think alike, Mayor.
I guess.
We bonded a few years ago for capital, and it only brought about $3 million, and that was, that was a payment of about half a million dollars a year, so it'd be less than 3 million.
So?
That was a 20-year bond. Oh, that was a 10-year bond. Yeah, that was a 10-year bond.
Okay, so I mean, $3 million is, I'm not saying it's not a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money.
But for roads, yeah, it's not a lot of money.
Not in the scheme of roads.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Brad?
Yeah, I would suspect that you wouldn't use that entire revenue stream for bonding anyway. A portion would go to pay-to-go, and a portion of it could be set aside for bonding, so I think that that would come back to the RTC, and they would come up with a recommendation to bring back to the board on how that revenue would best be used, and how we get the most road repair out of it.
How big a deal is it, Mr. Public Works, or Lucia, that we, if we did three or five years, sunsetted, subject to a vote, how big a deal is bonding to you to get your
The disparity between the amount of money that the city needs to safely maintain our roadways and the amount of money that we have is not going to be fixed by this action. I was asked to come prepared with some projects that we could use the $400,000 on if we didn't bond the roads. It represents approximately 10%, as the city manager said earlier, of our annual budget. The way you can think about funding for roads is it costs about $1 million a mile to reconstruct a road. That's what it cost us at that rate to do the Silver Sage project last year. That's a really good example of where, how far the money goes. For $400,000, it's, you know, just over a third of a mile of a reconstruct, so a couple blocks. blocks, right? We could probably pay for reconstruction of a portion of RUP, right? Which is what we did with the VNT bonds recently. That was about that much money. Where staff feel the money would probably be more meaningful would be potentially to go to the Streets Maintenance Fund to do a contract. There are certain things that we simply can't get to with our current staffing levels and budgets. Things like grating the shoulders and repairing some of the edges of some of our rural roads that frankly weren't built for the heavy diesel trucks. Those are things that we could use the money on, maybe with a contract annually. This amount of money is roughly equivalent to the recent franchise fee from, that we got from the Waste Management Contract, about $400,000 a year. For that, staff are looking into potentially doing a citywide contract for crack filling. So those aren't, you know, big sexy projects, big ribbon-cutting projects, but they're projects that are really important for extending the life of our asphalt. So another contract with maybe this diesel tax annually to look at grading some of our shoulders, providing some critical safety improvements to our roads, even if it was sunsetted in five years. Those are activities that we simply don't get to now that are really important, that would have a really meaningful impact.
Okay. I've got two lights on up here. I don't know who's still here. Supervisor Barrett then Supervisor...
Mine was from before.
Okay, Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. Lucia, could, or Darren, could you go into what I know you've gone into at great length at your traffic meetings regarding this problem, regarding where we're headed if the roads continue to deteriorate and we don't fix them as best we can. And I do recognize that Brad is correct when he says that this is a Band-Aid compared to what we need, but this is just going to get much worse. I want to project that for everyone who's listening. The problem won't not only go away, it will get far worse. Am I correct?
That's correct. A good example that I like to tell people is if you've driven on Lompah Lane from US-50 East up between US-50 and College, that road needs to be reconstructed. A number of years ago, we took the money we had and we did sort of an innovative seal on top of that road to extend its life. That road needs to be reconstructed. I get calls all the time. It's, at the current rate, it won't be reconstructed because the cost for that one road alone is more than our annual budget. And every single year, I'm seeing more and more roads where, sure, it comes up on the list, but we can't pay to do that road even if that was the only thing we did for that entire year. And so it's the order of magnitude of the need and where we're going every single year. It's not a matter of city staff being more efficient. It's, there's simply not enough dollars to even start those projects.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. Ready for Solomon? Let's see where this goes. On the motion, further discussion? Okay, this takes, if it's going to go, it has to have four votes in favor. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed?
No.
Okay, so we have three ayes, two noes. Motion fails.
So then let's do that.
Okay. Well, we can do nothing? I mean...
No. I'll try a motion.
Let's do a ballot measure. Let's let the people have a choice.
Well, then go ahead, make the motion.
I moved direct staff to pursue a five-cent diesel tax to be presented to the voters as a ballot question. Let the public tell us.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Motion dies for the lack of a... Motion dies for lack of a second. I mean, I think that's where we are in this world.
And you get nothing.
Okay. Somebody want to try another motion?
Right. I move to pursue a five-cent per gallon diesel fuel tax to be adopted by ordinance, followed by a ballot question at the second general election following implementation of the tax.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. John?
Yeah, I hate sunsets, but I will vote for this because we need this money even when we can't use it for bonding. I don't like it, but, you know, that's what democracy and representative democracy is all about. I don't get my way necessarily.
Okay. All right. Got your light on still?
Yeah, I just, I get that, you know, bonding is what you'd rather do, but I think there's enough things that can be done. We're still kicking the can down the road. I'm hopeful that in these, this five-year period, so we're looking at 2024 as election, right? That's your intent? If I figured it out correctly. You know, I'm hopeful between now and then that the legislature, the federal government will have come up with, you know, some other ways to make sure that everyone who's using the roads is paying for the roads and it's, it's going the other way. It's not happening. So it, we can't solve it at the local government level. So that's my reason for supporting this.
All well said.
All right. Further discussion on that motion?
I just want to comment one thing. It's not true to say that the diesel users aren't paying. The distribution of the tax just is more heavily on the freeway system. So I don't want to leave out to the public that someone that's driving a diesel truck isn't paying the same 52 cents in tax, because they are. But we are not getting, the distribution goes more to the state level and federal level than the local level. Well, I'm just saying that...
My comment relative to that wasn't to say that the diesel users aren't paying because I agree that they are.
Right, because now this would be they pay 52 cents.
My comment was that we have hybrid vehicles who are using the roads. We have electric vehicles that are using the roads.
Lot more issues.
And, you know, we have people who are driving vehicles that use fuel more efficiently, which is wise from the safety of our planet. I support that. But they're driving as much as they were and still using the roads. So really, that's the issue. And, you know, there are 17 counties in Nevada and 17 counties can take a stab at trying to solve this problem and it's not going to fix it.
I agree.
So it has to be done. And I'm not trying to kick the can up the road to a higher level of government, but really, this is much broader than we're ever going to be able to solve here in Carson. So that's really my comment.
And Lori, I agree with you that, you know, they are paying. It's just, it is a question of the distribution side here.
And may I clarify something else? So the general election wouldn't be in 2020, but the next one would be 2022, not '24.
Two elections.
Oh, well, we haven't had one yet, so I misunderstood that.
The tax would be implemented in 2020, correct?
Oh, well, depends on...
Correct.
When staff could bring the ordinance forward.
So that's November of 2020 that would be, would be the first election, general election, and then '22, 2022 would be the next. So did you mean that?
The second generalation, the second general election after the implementation of the tax. So it depends on whether it's implemented in 2020 or 2021. It would either be in the 2022 election or the 2024 election.
No, I think it'll be implemented in February or March.
I think it would be implemented in 2020. So the first election would be in 2020. The second election would be in 2022.
That's right. I just, I need real clarification that we all understand what this motion is and what we're doing, because I just, I'm not going to support a 2024. I'm just not going to do that. So I just...
I'd like more clarification.
Supervisor Barrett?
Just want to make one comment. These sunsets are going to come back and bite everybody and I don't like them.
Further discussion on the motion? Anybody? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay?
No.
Okay. This one passes, I think, four to two, four to one, excuse me. This is my adding today.
No, she's on the prayer. She's behind.
I don't see it coming up here.
No, nothing's coming up.
All right. Well, the motion, the motion was made by Supervisor Bonkowski, seconded by Supervisor Giomi.
No. What he does, but they do it to get it done.
And it passed four to one. Supervisor Bagwell is a no vote. Okay? All right. Any other discussion, any other items until we take a break? All right. Let's take a break for about 10 minutes.
Supervisors back to order, we're now on item number sixteen, the Senior Center. This is presentation of accomplishments and impact of Carson City Senior Center. Ms. Warner, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
All right. Let me shut this down.
He doesn't like the voter, he does.
Yeah. All right, take off, go.
Well, thank you Mayor and Board of Supervisors for having us today. The reason that we're here is that the Senior Center, from my knowledge, has never done a presentation of our impact to the community, and I think that it's essential to do this at least once a year, to show what we're doing and also to really recognize the special partnership that we have with the city and also with the nonprofit component of the Senior Center. So with me today, I always bring an entourage, so we have, and I'm going to introduce our members, so we have members from our governing board, which is our overseers of the nonprofit, and we have Bruce Scott, Mike Crossley, Mike Pavlakis, new member is Chris Gray. Then we also have members from our advisory council, and those are members that participate in the Senior Center. So we have Vice Chair Cory Steiner, we have Terry Krebs, and Bob Drews, and John Wilson.
Looks like a pretty good group.
Did Bob do something wrong to be excluded from the sitting with the rest? No, okay, just wanted to make sure. It's groom's family.
So I think, you know, perfect segue, I embrace uniqueness of everybody that we work with, so if he likes to sit in the back, I recognize that and I will embrace that. So our mission is to enhance the quality of life and independence of seniors, and that is a broad endeavor, and it's intentional in our mission because what it means to age is so unique to each individual, and we want to recognize that and run with that as an organization. So I'm going to give kind of just an overview of what we do, and then talk about our impacts. So in a nutshell, we have these different components of the Senior Center. We have an active Senior Center. We have a place that our seniors have purpose, a place to socialize, and a place to belong. We feed seniors through our Congregate and Meals on Wheels nutrition programs. We provide supportive case management through a varied range of services and resources. And then we also have our thrift store, which is a place to shop and a place to donate, and it's a source of revenue for us. So the important pieces of having an active Senior Center, we are blessed to have over thirty thousand square feet facility that is dedicated just to seniors, and I emphasize that because, you know, we get comparison with Douglas County with their new Senior Center and Community Center, well, that's a shared space, and we have dedicated space just for our seniors, so what does this do? It gives us an opportunity to really branch out and do a lot of activities, events, and services for our seniors. So we average about twelve scheduled activities per day, which is incredibly busy. We have a computer lab, a library, a billiards room, a TV room with cable and movies, these are dedicated space. You'll see that in other counties and other locations, Senior Centers have to flip their spaces to do other activities, and you see through trends that that is not as an effective way for seniors to get connected because it's just constantly changing, and it's okay, I was just doing exercise, and now I'm going to try to do a support group in the same room. And so the effectiveness kind of reduces a little bit, and so because we have all this dedicated space, we really are able to engage our seniors. And one of the other pieces too that we have is we are able to provide meeting spaces for other nonprofits, clubs, and special interest groups that furthers the benefit to the community, and we are really proud to be able to have those relationships with those organizations. And just to name a few that use our space, most of them coming from Washoe County, that benefit our Carson City residents and other counties because they don't always go further. We've got Caritash that visits, we've got Alzheimer's Association, Catholic Charities, Veterans Resource Center, we also had the U.S. Census Bureau visit us recently, and many more. We don't turn away a lot of folks that need to do outreach and services if it's for the community or specifically for the Senior Center. And like I mentioned before, the Senior Center is a place of purpose and belonging, and why that is important is that sadly suicide rates and depression rates are really high among seniors. And I attended a conference earlier this year, and they talked about a term that they were coining "connectiveness," and if somebody has the way to connect with something, whether it's people, whether it's a hobby, whether it's a place, that really helps with the struggles with aging, because it is a challenge for some to have a loss of a loved one. Downsizing from going from a large house to an apartment can really have some traumatic effects, and so the Senior Center can be a place for people to belong, find purpose, and to connect with also resources that they might need. We have several hundred seniors visiting us every day. It's hard for me to have an actual number on it because the Senior Center has so many entrances and exits, and we don't have an official way of scan card everybody in and get all the information. It's one of my really, you know, projects that I really have a high priority on, but haven't figured out how would we do that without really impacting a lot of people in terms of delaying their day every day, but we are proud that so many people visit our services. One of the things that I noticed when I started over four years ago is we were the best-kept secret in town, and that's not a good compliment, actually. And so what we've been doing over the past years is really overhauling our communication and our awareness efforts in the community. We need the community to know that we're here for the public in the various different capacities, and so I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that we've done. We overhauled our newsletter, which is published monthly. We have over six hundred that are distributed through a mailing list, email list, and hand-delivered to Meals on Wheels clients, and picked up at the Senior Center. And actually, I realize that it's not six hundred, it's about a thousand that's delivered. And so what we're doing with the content is making this informative information. It's a little, it's not a current document because it has to be printed and finalized so early in the month, but must-read information about nutrition, upcoming impacts in the community, things that you want to know, information about our volunteers, and then we really appreciate the submissions by our seniors of their travel, their favorite recipes, fun stories, and just things that really engage with our seniors and can connect them. And this is our activity calendar for October, so as you can see, it's very busy, there's lots of activities going on, and what we had to do, because we were so busy, is going back to our communication efforts, we had to make this tabloid-size eleven-by-seventeen document double-sided to be able to fit everything, so that we could also use good standard of practice with individuals that might have vision challenges to not go super tiny in a font. So I know it looks super tiny there, but it's a tabloid-sized paper that we tried to make sure that we didn't try to use a magnifying glass to read it. And that's the back page, so we try to keep it so that it's concise, you've got your menu on one side, and all of the activities listed below. All of those activities there are open, there's many that are not listed that are also going on, they're kind of our private clubs and different groups going on, so there's even more that's going on that's not listed. Our other main services that we're more traditionally known for with the Senior Center is also Congregate Nutrition. So we serve a fresh meal Monday through Friday from eleven to twelve-thirty. It's important to note that our time has expanded over my four years that we've been here, and the reason for that is we wanted our time to be friendly for working seniors, those that might be volunteering for the bus schedules, doctor's appointments, and just your personal preference. When we started, we were a hard start and a hard stop, and that really is unfriendly to some that want a little bit more flexibility in their day, so we made that change that you can come and go as you please, you can stay and socialize the whole entire time, or you can just come and grab a lunch and then go on your day. It's a balanced meal approved by our funding source, which is Aging and Disability Services Division, and it's for individuals sixty and over, but if you're under sixty, you can pay six dollars to have a meal. And the nutrition program onsite, Congregate Nutrition, we couldn't do it without our volunteers. It is a huge cost savings for us. They're serving our meals, pouring our beverages, assisting, bussing tables, doing a lot of the odds and ends, we have volunteers checking in, answering calls, it's our most valuable asset at the Senior Center, and our cost would go up tremendously if I had to hire individuals to do so. One of the neat things that we added with the Congregate Nutrition volunteer program, there's a lack of volunteers overall, and so what we've expanded is our job skills program, where we have great relationships with programs that provide services for individuals with disabilities, and so we're a training site to help them go on and get a paying job if their skill sets can develop there. So they come in with their coaches, and they're developing the skill sets in a variety of different opportunities and jobs, so that then they can go on and get in paying position. And sadly, we've lost quite a few volunteers that have gone on to get paying position, which is a great benefit, but it's sad for us to see them go because they made such an impact. And like I said before, with the importance of connection, a priority of our program, aside from the nutrition concept, is the socialization, and that's a term that, you know, it's not to force you to socialize, it's not to force you to engage, sometimes it's just to be around other people that helps with people, because sometimes not everybody is super bubbly and social, but being in a social environment is really helpful for their well-being. Our other main program that we have is our Meals on Wheels, and we are incredibly proud of this program. It's a fresh meal served Monday through Friday, and on weekends and holidays when we're closed, we're providing a frozen meal. We also do a shelf-stable meal twice a year for potential inclement weather where we have to close. Again, it's another balanced meal, it's cooked in the same kitchen and packaged in the same kitchen as our onsite dining. We have four routes that go out with paid staff that are delivering the meals, and it's important to note that you must be homebound to qualify. This is a need-based service, not because you no longer want to cook, but if you have a hardship to cook, or if you have a medical condition, or you're isolated and you can't drive, there's a lot of different factors that we look at for qualification, and we go into your home to do the assessment, you don't have to come to the Senior Center. When I have referrals and they've come to the Senior Center and they're asking, hey, I want to get on Meals on Wheels, that's my first red flag of, how did you get here? Because if you can get here, then we want you to connect you with Congregate Dining, it's a better social experience, it's a priority to get you there if you can. This one is specific for sixty and older. I will say that a gap that exists in the community is we get quite a bit of requests for individuals with disabilities that are kind of in that fifty-to-fifty-nine-year-old mark that could qualify if our funding source would allow. Our funding source does not allow for us to provide it through that program, we would have to charge, and most of the individuals that are asking for the services do not have the ability to pay for our services. Our caring drivers, they're doing a welfare check with each delivery. We have to have verbal or visual confirmation of the well-being of the client. It can be through a family member, but usually we do want it through the client themselves, and we're saving lives. We've found seniors on the floor that have fallen, we have found seniors outside in cold conditions that we're unable to call. We've also encountered situations where we suspect that some abuse is going on, and we've made the appropriate referrals. Our drivers do a phenomenal job of getting to know their clients and then able to see a change in condition, and then report on it immediately. And I would also like to say too, with the welfare check, when we had the situations happening in January of earlier this year with the crimes happening in Douglas County and then Washoe County, the sheriff called me and asked, hey, do we have confirmation that everybody has been checked on? And so at least with our And so at least with our client list, we were able to say, "Absolutely, we've had confirmation that all of our clients are safe and okay." Um, our drivers do the little things. This is the one thing that I think that makes our program really special. They bring in the, the mail, the newspaper, they pet the dog if the dog wants to be pet. Um, they put the meal in the fridge. I have drivers that will get utensils out and set the meal up, um, for the senior. They really get to know, um, those that they're serving and provide those additional services that it's not required for us to do. But there's a lot of seniors that we serve that don't have any other contact in the day. It's the right thing to do. And I really take pride in the fact that our drivers are willing to go and do those extra steps along the way. Our case management program has just, just hit the, um, hit the ground running. Uh, started four years ago and it just keeps growing and growing and growing. Um, and our case management, we just, we provide sort of supportive services. We can do it in our offices, or we can also do it in your home. We have three case managers and one Spanish-speaking. And, um, the assistance is varied. It's so specific to the senior and the situation that they're facing at that time. So it can be housing applications, "I need durable medical equipment." Um, "I need respite care, I need incontinent supplies." Um, I, you know, it can be as complex or as simple and straightforward. We are seeing the demand for services increase and the complexity of the cases, uh, continue to grow, which just takes more and more time. But one of the things that makes our program successful is that we provide the hand-holding and we provide the time for the senior. We do not just pass out an application. That's so, my pet peeve, quite honestly, because the application would be so complex. And why not assist in the process and, um, provide the instructions? If we can't do the service, which we don't really have a lot of services, let's make the phone call instead of just giving the number to the agency. And, um, what had, that has done is built our trust with the community and we're getting more and more referrals from different agencies. And, um, one of the, one of the referrals that we really appreciate is also from the most team, even though they're very complex and very difficult. Uh, what it does is it frees up that service that is so critical to our community. And we can provide the hand-holding and the most team knows that we're there and we're, um, able to see things through. Um, and they can then free themselves up to go and work on, um, other caseloads. So I put together kind of a little compilation of our year of accomplishments. Um, I am terrible at taking a lot of pictures, um, but I think I caught, you know, quite a few things that we're doing. One of the things that we are really proud of this year is our relationship with Colo Cares and the fan drive. Um, this year we did a hundred and forty-nine fans, uh, that were donated from our generous community and then delivered to clients. Last year in two thousand and eighteen, we did a hundred and eleven. So it's a huge growth for us. And then we have an excellent partnership with Colo Eight. And, uh, they came down so many times for interviews and pictures just to keep plugging this, uh, successful program. And, um, we also do a Christmas gift program. That's through our case management program, traditionally targeted for Meals on Wheels seniors, but we've expanded it to also seniors in need in general. So we also reach out to caregivers and care agencies that might have clients that have a need. And we ask for specific, uh, gifts for, um, our, uh, requests that come in. Last year we did three hundred and ninety-eight specific gifts. And, uh, in addition, we also had a hundred slippers, blankets, and other kind of odds and ends that were also donated. So that's a great relationship we have with businesses and different individuals that are willing to, um, donate. And then we also have some volunteers that deliver. And these requests that are coming in, it's really humbling. It's blankets, it's, um, slippers, it's a robe, it's new sheets. Uh, very rarely do we have a request for like a flat-screen TV or something that's, uh, kind of out of the ordinary. These are microwaves and, and different things like that that are our basic needs and it's, uh, wonderful that we're able to fulfill that. We also, uh, performed our twenty-second Folly Show, which is a consecutive show that's been, uh, um, in the running and we're already preparing for next year.
Courtney, um, on the, the gift, senior gift, uh, thing, do you do what some of the schools, I, I know at our work, we, um, adopt two or three families? And, uh, is this similar to that where you're, where someone like myself could come in and say, "Hey, give me a list of two or three people," and i- is that how that works?
It is how it works. However, one of the reasons why you haven't ever seen the requests is because the businesses and individuals that have been doing it for so years, so many years, they just take them all up. And so usually we have more requests, uh, or donors than requests. And as it's grown, um, the businesses just keep taking more and more. And I think that that's really neat. Um, one of the, um, folks that, that donated a gift, um, I'm not sure if it was last year or two, or two years ago, um, but it was a couple. And instead of them giving gifts to each other, they just adopted a senior. And that's just really, you know, really neat. But we haven't advertised because we've been able to fulfill, um, things. So this is all through word of mouth. Um, this past year, we, uh, rebranded the thrift stores, which has increased sales by over thirty percent. Um, our efforts were to increase the public awareness. We didn't do much to the store because we're very limited to what we can do to the store, but we wanted the, the public to know of what the purpose of the store does, um, that it's a mission-driven store and, um, that's open to the public. That's why we got rid of the name with the Senior Center in it because a lot of folks thought it's only for seniors. And it expanded their, uh, our hours so that we were, um, uh, able to sho- you're able to shop if you're a working adult. Um, we continue to have a great partnership with the Sheriff's, um, Department, the Fire Department, and the Senior Center, um, through our Triad program. The overall goal is to reduce victimization of older adults. Um, however, we go a little bit further with that of just really trying to provide quality education resources for those living in Carson. And so, um, next year we are going to be doing monthly, uh, presentations for two thousand and twenty and seeing how that goes. Triad has really brought in a bunch of new seniors that are interested in the topic. And so we continue to vary the different topics. Um, our tax services through AARP, over nine hundred tax returns, um, completed free of charge. And then also, um, this year I was, uh, and, and with Kathy Taylor from In Plain Sight Marketing, we presented on our lessons learned from a successful marketing, branding, and awareness campaign at the National Meals on Wheels of America Conference, which was a fun, a fun day for us. Um, our volunteer appreciation that happened in September, it was our largest attendance with raved reviews. Most of the volunteers, um, what they really appreciated is that the staff dressed up. We were relatively competitive, um, with the, our, our dress-up and that was just really fun day. It brought great energy and a great appreciation to our volunteers. We have a fantastic relationship with the, um, Kiwanis Clubs, um, the Carson City Kiwanis and the Sierra Nevada Kiwanis Club. Um, and so that's a picture of this annual spaghetti feed. We had Elsie, uh, celebrate her hundredth birthday, which was a fun highlight. And then we've also received generous donations for new bingo equipment, which is, um, one of our revenue, um, streams for the Senior Center. We did a bowling night for Senior Center staff and families. Um, we have a fantastic relationship with Harris and Harvey's up at the lake. Their Heroes Program. Um, this year they decided to liven up our courtyard with new plants and decor, plus give it a good pressure wash, which, uh, is what it greatly needed. And they have been changing up their program, uh, every year to do different services for the Senior Center or for Meals on Wheels. And we also have received many different recognition from, um, you know, donations and gifts. This one is with, uh, the Carson City Elks Lodge. And again, there's so much more that we have done that we, um, have not captured in this past year in pictures. So now I want to go into impact. So impact is hard to judge with the Senior Center. Like I said, we don't have a way to, to scan every single person that comes in our door. Um, so the impact is judged based on our, our grant-funded programs where we are keeping measurements. So in this past year, um, so from October two thousand and eighteen through September of two thousand and nineteen, we served, uh, forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four meals in our Congregate Nutrition. We have continued to slightly grow every year with Congregate. Um, so, you know, that's a national trend. Um, but we are meeting our goals that we set out. And who are we serving? This is self-reported information. Uh, but twenty-three percent have a disability, twenty-six percent are living in poverty, uh, thirty-nine percent are living alone, and six percent, um, identify as being Hispanic or Latino. And that's just something that, um, we're working to grow our diversity. We want to make sure that we are serving the public, um, uh, as they need it. Uh, for October, um, we had, um, almost another record, record month of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-six meals served. So that's averaging about a hundred and eighty-one meals a day. For Meals on Wheels, this is where we have the biggest impact. Ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six meals delivered. Um, we have seen tremendous growth in Meals on Wheels. Um, since I've been here, um, the numbers just continue to just grow and grow and grow. The demand is there because we are, uh, scrutinizing our, uh, referrals and applications, uh, stronger than we ever have. Um, so sixty-seven percent have a disability, thirty-one percent are living in poverty, fifty, uh, six percent are living alone, three percent identify as being Hispanic or Latino. And on a self-reported survey that we just collected in, twenty-six percent are veterans. Um, eighty-five percent, um, uh, agree that Meals on Wheels is helping them live independently. And seventy-seven percent are saying that Meals on Wheels is necessary for their continued health.
How many people is that, do those meals represent? How, how many constituents does it represent?
Oof, um, I have to get you that number. Um, it's not as high as you would think. Uh, Congregate is, I'm going to go by ballpark, about twelve hundred unduplicated clients. And I think Meals on Wheels is maybe around five to six hundred. Because most of the clients that get on Meals on Wheels are going to stay for a long period of time. Uh, how Meals on Wheels works, you, we should get on the program. You can apply to be on just a short-term. Let's say that you're recovering from a hospital stay, um, and then you're going to fully recover. But if you wanted to be on a longer term, then we reassess you once a year. Um, but most of our clients are staying on for a longer period of time. And, uh, average meals that we're serving per day is right now at three hundred and fifteen. We anticipate that to go up to four hundred by next year, just based on growth models. So the impact on Meals on Wheels really comes from what our clients are saying about, um, our services. And, uh, based on our survey that we just completed in October, I really appreciate when, um, our Meals on Wheels participants take the time to write about our impact. And I don't steer them that way, just ask for comments, um, on the survey. And the overall comments are gratefulness because of, um, what we do and also what our drivers do in terms of that personal relationship. And so I just wanted to, um, to share a few that were just a highlight. Um, I'm so grateful to the Meals on Wheels organization. Not only do I receive a balanced meal every day, but some days my driver is the only human interaction. A heartfelt thank you to all of the wonderful people involved in this wonderful program. And then another comment, um, in terms of just what our drivers are doing that makes a difference is, "And, uh, I appreciate so much the wonderful help Matt, my tenant, which is his dri- their driver, has done for me in bringing my food to me. He's been so kind to open bottles and assist me in every way. I also thank the others who deliver my food when Matt is on vacation. Thanks to all of, uh, all of you at Meals on Wheels, God bless you all." And so, um, it's important to note about food security too, as we're doing our services. Um, it's a growing problem among seniors. And we do ask for, um, food insecurity on our survey if our clients are worrying at all about where their next meal is going to come from. And fifty-five percent, um, did report that they are struggling with food insecurity. So that worry right there is just an added stress in terms of their wellbeing. And so it's a wonderful gap that we're able to serve, uh, but more needs to be done because we're only doing one meal a day. Uh, so where are those other two meals coming? Um, so that's important to note. For case management, um, we provided, um, over twelve, or two thousand hours of service provided, so that's direct client services, uh, hours. Fifty-five percent of those have a disability, thirty-nine percent are living in poverty, fifty-eight percent are living alone, and seven percent are Hispanic or Latino. And, um, the gaps that we're seeing in terms of what's going on, um, with need is available housing and then of course affordable housing. So it's kind of goes hand in hand because we're seeing the issue kind of, uh, on both sides. It's not only just affordable, but it's also just available housing. Um, transportation, a lot of our services, um, have wait lists in terms of door-to-door services and, um, uh, different services that could accommodate. Getting to Reno, um, I'm getting requests of, "I need to get to the airport." And different services that unfortunately are low priority, a lot of our transportation providers. Um, and so that's a gap that needs to be identified. And then also dental services for those that are not veterans, um, but that do need dental coverage and don't have the ability to afford that. And so those are areas that we're looking at to try to see, figure out how can we provide some services or education? And, um, again, we anticipate this area to grow because we want to continue to increase our time as the complex, uh, the complex cases come through and not just, "Here's an application and be on your way," because that's not going to work, um, with the needs that we're seeing. And, um, it's just also, this is the right thing to do. So I didn't want to focus too much on numbers, but numbers are really important in our organization. And so I wanted to just review, kind of just overview of our bottom line. This is nonprofit only. Um, and so I consolidate a lot of the different categories that we get our funding sources from and our revenue and expenses. Um, but we have twenty-five total employees for our nonprofit. Four are full-time and the rest twenty-one are part-time employees. We received sixty-eight percent, uh, through grant funding. Uh, ninety-seven percent of that is through Older Americans Act funding and state funding through aging services. I did a comparison of two thousand and twenty to two thousand and seventeen. So there's a few years missing. I did this intentionally because I wanted to highlight the progress that our organization has done in terms of being fiscally responsible while also meeting an increase in demand. Um, and so we have gone from a large deficit, um, from two thousand and seventeen to now a balanced budget. Um, and so how did we get there? Um, and so you can see that there's a, uh, large growth in grant funding. The state, uh, with their reimbursement rates through our nutrition programs finally gave us a good boost this past year. So that has helped us tremendously, especially because we weren't anticipating this, um, to happen. Um, and what we've also been doing is just being really smart with our expenses and finding other sources of revenue. So with thrift store growth, we're able to put more revenue and get more revenue out of the store that comes from awareness and also from our amazing staff that are doing, um, their work at the thrift store. Um, I think it's important to note too, that even though our balance, our budget is balanced, it's also with a lot of, you know, projections and guesswork. Um, so we're of course projecting demand. And if for some reason that shifted, um, at a larger rate than we anticipate, that would also skew our figures a bit, uh, because our grant funding has a cap. And so, um, we wouldn't be able to request more funds from the state. And we're also doing some guesswork of raw food, which is relatively a three-to-five percent-ish, um, on average. But sometimes some things can happen and, um, it just skews the numbers. And one of the things that we need to work on that you don't see on there is having a strong, um, source of a break-fix bucket. Uh, because we have a lot of equipment, we have, uh, vehicles on the road. We need to have contingency if something happens that we didn't plan for. And so those are, um, our goals of the organization as we move forward. So our future, where are we headed? So I talked about growth of Meals on, uh, Meals on Wheels. We anticipate, when I did this slide, it was three hundred, now we're at three fifteen. Um, and we're anticipating that to grow to over four hundred by next year. So what's going to, what's it going to take to get there? We've got eight, uh, one very old Meals on Wheels vehicle. And then we also have to evaluate how we're delivering our meals to make sure that we're not holding our meal too long and the quality goes down really poor. Because we have the vehicles that keep it hot or cold, so it's always going to be a safe range. But you know that if you've had something in a hot vehicle for a while, the quality of your food really goes down. So that's something that we're going to be always evaluating and looking at. We're going to be applying for an additional case management. It will be a competitive grant cycle. And, uh, we think that we have the numbers to prove the demand is there. What we want to do is increase participation to Congregate Lunch. The national trends are showing there's a decline in participation without a strong answer to why. And, um, overall, the why is because I, our seniors are changing. The generations are changing, the needs are changing, and what they want is changing, access. access is changing, all of that. And so we need to add choices, we need to add events, themes, and just energy to our lunch program. We've gotten a little stale, and that's something that we want to liven up. We need to plan for the future of the thrift store. So one of the things that we agreed upon when we were planning for the city budget is no capital is going into the thrift store, because there was a capital item that was on the maintenance schedule that we struck. The reason for that is, why put in any more money into that building? So the nonprofit board is charged with figuring out what's the next plan for that building, because we know that there will be an end to that store at some point, and what does it look like? One of the things that we've already put in place though, is to maximize the profit of the existing store. Because if we can keep pushing our profit up higher and higher, then I think we have a stronger argument to say, "Gosh, it makes sense to maybe build another building." Right now, I'm still on the fence of kind of, you know, where does this go? And so we need to put in this really strong plan of what is next for that thrift store. And like I mentioned in the previous slide, the funding sources for the nonprofit. So we're a balanced budget now, but we don't have a strong contingency, and we need to continue to grow this. And so we need to grow donations. We started this year with asking private businesses to get behind us, and we already had some instant response, which was wonderful. And so we need to grow that. And then one of the things that the Senior Center does not have is a signature fundraising event or a non-event, because it doesn't necessarily have to be event, but it's something that we do not have, and it's something we need to evaluate, is, does it make sense to have something like that as another funding source as well? And then lastly, we're looking to recruit a board member with restaurant and catering background. The reason for that is that I can oversee a commercial kitchen, but I can't design one. I have a hard time trying to evaluate efficiency, and then also what's our capacity. So as we grow with Meals on Wheels in general, we will reach a mark where we cannot make those meals, because we've run out of space. So bringing in a board member with that experience and those connections too can help guide us in that direction, plus give us oversight about how we're doing. Food service is tough, and especially delivering, producing meals for about 600 people a day, it's hard to please 600 pallets, but you have to make sure that you're on point with what you're doing. And so that's one of the reasons we're looking for that specific skillset. So that concludes kind of our year of accomplishments and our impact. I did wanna use this opportunity to thank the businesses that have gotten behind us and supported us, the individuals that continue to support us, both the city and senior center staff. We have a very unique relationship, and I think that it works very well, and I'm very appreciative of all of that. Our wonderful volunteers, and then our elected officials, because of your support. We can't do it alone, and it's a large operation, but we're able to make it work, trying to be very lean. I hope this presentation was useful, and I'd like to do it again next year. And probably not as much backstory, and then we can just talk about the year. Our challenges ahead, our seniors are changing, and so we have to constantly change. And that's something that I'm really excited about doing, because we always need to evaluate our services. I take it to heart that we are here as a public service to our community, and trying to figure out exactly what the needs are and gaps are is something that we will continue to drive forward. If there, do you have any questions for me?
No, but I'll tell you, you're welcome back next year.
Thanks.
And kudos to those who got the Senior Center off the ground those many years ago. Taking care of the senior population, particularly the, not necessarily disabled, but the homebound seniors is critical in this community. And I wanna thank you a lot for doing that. Can't tell you I'm gonna give you any money, but...
There's no ask. I thought it was an easy presentation, no ask. It's just informative only.
That's a good way to start.
And Bruce Scott, our governing board president, did wanna say a few words.
Hi Bruce. Brad, do you wanna jump in now?
Yeah, I did have a question for Courtney, just to prove that I was actually listening to what you said. You just said that you're in the kitchen, that you're producing about 600 meals a day. But previous to that, I think I heard you say that the Congregate meals were about 600 a day, and Meals on Wheels were about 300 a day. So does that mean that the Meals on Wheels meals are not made in the commercial kitchen? Or are you actually doing 900 meals a day?
No, it's 600. So we're about, on average, about 181 was what October looked like for Congregate, and then we do our Meals on Wheels. What we do in terms of our efficient operation is we're also overcooking, because then that turns into our frozen meals, so that we're not having to prepare a sixth and seventh meal in our operation. So we always cook for about 600 a day. But we don't anticipate Congregate to grow too significantly yet, but with some changes in terms of maybe choice, or making it more exciting to be, we might be growing, and we could get up there. But right now, we're about 600.
Right. Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you so much for all your support over the years and ongoing support of the Senior Center. I'm Bruce Scott. I'm a member of the governing board for the Private Nonprofit Corporation, which is Carson City Senior Citizens Center, Inc., and that goes back to the 70s. We're technically the grantee for the grants for the nutrition program, the case management, and other programs, and we are your partner in the bigger picture. Most of the employees at the Senior Center are technically employees of the nonprofit. We have four, three city positions. And that's one way that we've been able to keep the cost down. I wanted to touch on one thing, just to think about, and perhaps for staff too. We are, we, the Carson City Senior Citizens Center, Inc., are partners in Autumn Hills, four different senior low-cost housing complexes. And the numbers that Courtney showed demonstrate some of the need for, obviously you know that well, and you've had lots of opportunities to face that issue. But I would offer that if there are locations where potential housing might occur, if the federal programs are able to assist us the way we have in Autumn Village and Sierra Place and the other ones, we would be happy to continue to be a partner in trying to facilitate further senior low-cost housing. And what allowed those properties to move forward basically was free land, and that free land is city land. And if there are locations or places that might come up that would be appropriate for another senior housing complex, we would be pleased to work with you from the private nonprofit perspective, to see if we could help implement that. And just very briefly, as you can tell, Courtney's got great enthusiasm. We are really pleased with what she's done and the leadership she's provided, and we certainly thank you and the staff, has always been very, very responsive. We're getting a makeover on our parking lot, which we very much appreciate. Not speaking for the seniors who are temporarily displaced, but we really appreciate that. So thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
We have a question from Supervisor Bagwell.
Or just a general comment. Excuse me. I love going there on Mondays, so I will prop up your line dancing. Carol and Linda are superb teachers.
You're doing line dancing?
I go to the Senior Center on Mondays. I really do enjoy, just in general, talking with them, seeing how they're doing, but you have two great line dance teachers, and then I enjoy working on the triad group to see what we can do to help seniors feel safe in the community and secure. But I also wanted, I didn't hear anything in your presentation, I want to give a plug, and maybe you can enlighten me just a little bit how it works, the gift shop, that's not part of the thrift store, correct? But doesn't that give crafters and opportunities for seniors to earn a little bit of pin money from themselves? Is that a cooperative? I'm not sure how that one works, but I know they get something, because I buy out of, it's the greatest little secret, you guys. I'm just trying to prop up some more opportunity for you. Great handmade gifts, anyway.
Nice timing too, because they're also having their holiday gifts out right now. So for today and tomorrow, they have a little bit of a lobby sale going on. So our gift shop...
Hang on, I got another question here. Hold on, from Supervisor Barrett.
Nope.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So our gift shop is actually an activity that exists within the Senior Center, and it's got a dedicated space where volunteers assist with selling the handmade items. The items have to come from a senior, and they have to be mostly handmade. And there's all unique treasures there. The crafters set their own price, and then there's a small commission that's taken out that just goes back into running that operation. We do, we have advanced in our world in terms of being able to take credit cards now, and it's got a lot of activity. And one of our crafters that's incredibly talented, she makes usually about 1,000 or so a month in additional, just pocket change for the stuff that she's making. And there's a lot of pride there, so if you ever need something that's unique, because you can also ask for stuff too, because I've done that as well, of asking for something specific, and they whip it out pretty much next day, surprisingly. And so where also the tie too goes to the Senior Center, is we have a rock cutting lab. And so if you're a rock hound, you're going out and finding your rocks, and then you're cutting them, polishing them, and then a lot of them are then turning that into handmade items for sale. So it's a pretty neat way that we're able to connect seniors and their hobbies.
Thank you, and thank you Courtney for your presentation. You've also given me some Christmas shopping ideas here. And I also wanted to thank Bruce for your service with the Senior Center and in other facets, both in the private sector and with the city. Thank you. And all you other folks too.
Do you have as old folks?
Hey, I'm 77, do I qualify as old?
You have to pay double. Okay. Any other questions of these folks? Anybody? Thanks to all of, thanks to your board, and thanks to you for all you do for our seniors. And, you know, that's probably too narrow a thank you. Thank you for helping make the community a better place to live for all of us, because when we help one person, we're helping all of us in this community. So thank you. All right. Any public comment on this one? Which member of your board members back there were the ones starting the 25 cents for the Senior Center? Who did that? Ah.
Car maker's not here.
What year was that?
I'm old, I don't remember.
I'm trying to guess, 4.
That's about right.
Early 80s.
Right.
Okay, thanks. All right. All right, I don't see any more on this one. Board, we're okay, so let's, thank you very much Courtney, thanks to your board for being here, spending some time with us. You're welcome back next year. Welcome back anytime you wanna be back Courtney, but next year for sure. Okay, let's take up potential, the process for updating the zoning code. Who's gonna do this? Lee? Mr. Plummel?
Sorry, thanks for the time to set up there. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director, and this item is for discussion only, to talk about the process for updating the zoning code, Title 18 and the associated development standards that are in the appendix, and also as we discuss that, and say Title 18, I think we're also talking about Title 17, where all the subdivision processes are located. Because I know some of the comments that we've talked about are related to subdivision processes, so ultimately I think that's gonna kind of fall into this update. Just a little bit of background on what we're doing and where we plan to go. I think what we wanna come out from this is some direction to narrow down a focus in the short term in particular. Title 18 is, the development standards are contained within Title 18, they're a chapter and a reference document, a big separate long document. Title 18 generally contains the process-oriented standards, and the development standards generally contain the design-oriented standards. It was earlier this year, I believe, that the Board of Supervisors set a goal to have the Planning Commission review Title 18 and the associated development standards for possible amendments. So what we've done so far is, planning staff has conducted some workshops with the Planning Commission on, really with the intent initially of orienting the Planning Commission to the code overall. We take, we take applications to them all the time, we focus on certain elements of the code based on what that application is, but we've gone through some workshops with them outside of regular Planning Commission meetings, to go over, kind of give them a framework. We've reviewed the chapters related to administrative provisions, definitions, use districts, general provisions, and that's it so far. And I think this is a good point in time to come to the Board of Supervisors and get some focus, because as shown in the table of contents, that's part of your packet, there's a lot in Title 18 and the development standards, including in the development standards, sections that are completely related to park standards, and sections that are completely related to transportation, and other engineering and public work standards. So just to say we're going to update all of Title 18 is a pretty daunting task to do internally. Just to kind of put some context on that, the city of Reno is recently under contract with somebody to update their development code. The contract is over $500,000, plus I know they have some of their planning, obviously they're a larger department, larger community, and they have some planning staff that's dedicated to that. So that just kind of puts it in perspective, if you think about the work hours, person hours through the year, to accomplish kind of a comprehensive update of the zoning code like that. So we're at the point right now in working with the Planning Commission, it's the holidays now, so with some scheduling, it's been harder to schedule meetings, but we plan to schedule meetings in, if not, if not in November and December, certainly starting next year on a regular basis, in between regular planning meetings, and I think we like some direction on what areas to focus. Our thoughts as a department and with the Planning Commission, well, so far, I wanted to say too, in those sections that we've discussed, we've discussed a little bit the approach we wanna take in changes. For example, with the use tables and all the minutia of types of uses that are listed to kind of group those together a little better, and group the tables together a little better. So we've talked about conceptually how we want, how we're gonna wanna approach some changes when we come back, but we haven't really started to talk about and debate specific changes. Because I think as we go through, as we go through changes, and as you give us priorities in this discussion to focus on, remember that within these sections, there's a lot of little things that are big issues. Just for example, accessory dwelling units, which we've started and come back around and realized how far that reaches into different chapters. The city of, I believe it was the city of Reno, went through months of public hearings and neighborhood workshops and meetings, drafted an ordinance that ended up not being adopted, but whether it was adopted or not, just one little issue can really take a large public input process, and there's a lot of those little things in these codes that we're talking about that can come up during this process. So we wanna, we wanna hear from you on what areas we should focus on, because I think, because our goal would be then, at this point, to really start to focus, to go through those areas in particular. And we'd like, in order to get some amendments done and some changes implemented that are really important, is to not try to tackle all of Title 18 with one large thing, but to tackle chapters at a time, and get through those, and actually make some changes that help the process, and then go back and, as we go down the list, the prioritization on various chapters. And so that's kind of our proposed approach that I sort of have outlined up there on the screen for your reference. But with that, I'd be happy to take questions, and we'd like some input and discussion on...
So the type of input and discussion you're... So the type of input and discussion you're asking for, so suppose I told you, I want somebody to take a look at the growth management ordinance. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, yes. And well, and to start off, I think that this item was put on the agenda initially at the request of a board member. But as I said, very good timing for this discussion, because I think we're at this point where we need some focus on what to focus on. And if it's things like growth management or those types of things, yes, that's where we're, that's what we're looking for.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Thank you. The, in general, I agree with the outline that you have here. I see the cleanup of Title 18 and portions of Title 17 to be a phased project, like you suggested. Generally, I agree with the priority chapters, 1802, 1803, 1804, 1805. I think I would also include 1816, development standards, in that one. And then the second phase would be chapters 1806, 1807, 1812, which would be downtown mixed use, historic district and growth management. And then Phase 3 would be the balance of the chapter. I think that that kind of puts the chapters in order of priority importance, at least as far as much as we use it, the chapter. So that's just kind of my thoughts. Because as you know, you know, in that chapter a lot. So that's kind of my thinking on how to proceed.
I agree with those.
But yeah, and I'd like, you know, a little bit, Chapter 1816 is the development standards. But then the development standards is a document in itself that's bigger than Title 18. So our approach would be, as up there, our daily, our daily project review chapter is Division 1. So there's a lot of divisions in there of the development standard. Division 1 is the general design standards. We actually deal also with, you know, parking landscaping and signs, which I think is 2, 3, and 4 in that order. We know there's a lot of changes in just Division 1, just those basic development standards that apply to all developments and then some of those that apply to specific types of development that would be, that we would like to include in the first phase, then move on to parking landscaping and signs. Signs, for example, is a whole thing all by itself and will take some time. So that would be our intended approach.
Right. And just as, as an example, you know, I look at Division 3, which is landscaping. And in major project review, we include basically standard template comments in every major project review regarding landscaping and it's six pages. To me, it seems to make more sense that you would just put a link in the major project review comments to say, look at Division 3 Title 18, rather than give somebody six pages of minutia that they're going to need to follow. So that's just one example of a suggestion where I think we can become more efficient. Like, we're not circumventing the code, it's just that we don't need to put six pages of code in the letter.
Yeah, that's, that's an immediate suggestion we can implement now. Yeah, I, I agree, the comments will be focused on, if there's comments in the letter on that actual development, other development standards to link, thank you for that. But we can implement things like that, starting now.
So maybe just a general comment that, I'm trying to understand that when I'm looking, like you said, more into the detail of the development standards, would you not link your work when you're, because I agree with the same priorities that Brad did for like 1806, 1807. Wouldn't you be linking then the development standard that crosses those? So like Division 6, the downtown business district, isn't there a lot of, with 18, when you're doing 1807, you would do Division 6? I just wonder that you kind of link your priorities so that you're doing the work together, so that you're not over here saying, oh, I want to change da, 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 and you don't real, oh, all that work we did, now we're going to do pieces again. So I just recommend that you take the like development standards that link to anything at the chapter level at the same time. So if you're going to do historic district and downtown, mixed use district and growth management, that you select the development standards that match those areas, to the best of your ability.
Right, right. And that's, that's basically says that up there is where that top priority is, including in the process, other chapters, plural, needing conforming changes based on those initial changes. So, yeah, we have to evaluate that as we go. The downtown mixed use is a good one, because you have in Title 18, what, that's, as I said, process oriented, there's uses listed, and then there's another chapter with the process for varying from those standards. And then there's the development standards with all the design standards for the downtown mixed use. So, to the extent that those need to be updated for conforming, those need to go concurrently.
And then just another thought, like looking at Division 8 park standards, could we take some of these and actually, instead of starting at the Planning Commission, actually throw those off to like Open Space and the Park and Rec Commission to help really be the front line on some of those and get, so we don't have to stretch this all the way out, maybe four years, and some of that work is already, some heavy lifting is already done by some of the great commissions that we have, so that we could spread this out a little bit. Instead of it going to planning, who then kicks it to Parks and Rec, I think you should go the other way. And let Open Space and Park and Rec maybe take some of these and start the process. Just another thought, slight change to the methodology, but I think might be, and the health, you know, Division 11, historic district, you go to the historic commission. So I'm just suggesting that you look at some of these to say, hey, do we have an ancillary committee that really is fundamentally engaged in that process anyway and help out the process?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's a good suggestion in what we'll do with some of those chapters, starting next year.
Ben's looking over at me smiling.
Let the other chap, we're going to let the other departments know. And it, you know, and I should, could have mentioned upfront too, that that's already in the works, for example, with engineering. I mean, they already have changes in the works for some of the developments, development standards chapters related to engineering, and they've already been working on that. So some of that's in the works and to the extent that it's not, the Historic Resources Commission is, it's been over, occasionally over years, discussed possible changes. So this can get raised to the level of them that it's, that it's time we're doing this update to start looking at changes. So, yeah, we'll incorporate that in, you know, starting in 2020 into the review process.
I don't know whose light went on. John, Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you. Perhaps I'm confused about this, under administrative, I noticed the master plan, and we've talked about kind of a little bigger look into the master plan than our usual annual look. Is this incorporated into what you're talking about as priority or not?
Not sure I understand the-
Well, we had earlier talked about, instead of just doing an annual update, that we'd do a little bigger look at it next year. And is that coming into this or is it not? Or is that a separate item, we can talk about it some other time?
Whether or not, I think, not to step on anybody's conversation, he's asking whether or not the master plan is part of this.
So the annual, we annually bring a master plan update-
Right.
-to the Planning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors. That's actually going to the Planning Commission in November.
Right.
So then we'll subsequently bring it to the Board of Supervisors. So the, as I'm drafting the staff report now, I'm suggesting that this, this is an implementation, this is a, this is a master plan implementation action, actually, to keep this updated.
That's what I was asking, I'm confused about this.
So we're going to bring, we're going to bring the annual report and you can make other recommendations regarding the master plan. But I think this is, this is actually a strategy per the master plan to keep codes updated. And so this will be a big action at your direction. That's, so, we're going to show this in the master plan review as being a major action and project for the next year or two.
Thank you. That's what I was asking.
Supervisor, do you want me?
Lee, as a, as a general approach, I assume you're looking sort of globally at trying to make the code as user friendly as possible, whatever that means. I mean, I know there's not a definition to user friendly, but one of the examples that I think of is the, is the use table and how it sort of builds upon itself. And it can be kind of confusing to people. So for instance, if you're, if you're in general industrial, you can do all the things, and I'm using the wrong term, you can do all the things that you could do in limited industrial and you can, and it builds. And if you don't quite understand that, it's very difficult to find, it's hard for the average person to look at that and understand it. And I, I would hope that that would be sort of the overall approach to the process, is to try and make it as user friendly as possible. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair, that's a fair statement. And on that, and on that topic in particular, I do want to note that it is fully our intent to go to a table format. Yes, it's, it's admittedly very difficult for the average person to find out if their use is permitted because of the way references back. We don't refer them to the code. It's like talk to Kathy Green and ask her, and then she'll direct you back. But, but through this process, we've created a table that reflects what the code says now, and we're going to start putting that up on the, on the website and actually use that. It's the most accurate, it reflects what's in the code, it's not officially adopted, but, but using it. And then, and then group, yeah. I think we want to, and we want to group their uses together and to get to that point where it's user, and generally, that's an example, but generally, that type of thing to make it more user friendly.
I think that's great, because I think there's sometimes a, you know, right or wrong, I think people look at that and think that we were purposely making it as complicated as we can, so that we can, you know, we can, you know, just make it difficult for them to find the answer. So anything we can do to make that better. And then, and then, when do we get to giving you specific input? And here's another example. Several months ago, we talked about putting in sort of some parameters about when we would ultimately be accepting dedication of streets and when we wouldn't be. That there would be, you know, that, that some of us said we would not like that to be an automatic. So when do we, as board members, provide specific input to things like that, that we have, that we want to see incorporated in the process? I mean, is it going to be on us to read those things as they come out in the Planning Commission agendas? Or how do we go about doing that? Good question, huh?
Yeah, no, it, I do want to add to that. So things, there are things like that, that where, where that may be in Title 17, for example, that's something that's not on the priority. But, you know, in talking to the DA's office about this and the approach, I think they've agreed with us that there are still going to be other fixes, small fixes, needed without, without rewriting the entire chapter. So if the Board of Supervisors has policies like that that need to be changed in a specific section of the code, we're still going to need to come forward with those things without rewriting necessarily that entire chapter. So the question was, how do, how do you, we're going to develop a program, we are going to develop a program next year to start having the public workshops on certain sections, chapters, top areas of topic to get, to get input on. That would certainly be the time to start doing that. But there may be other things like that that aren't in these, that aren't in these chapters that we're looking at in the next few months that may be important and need to take a separate path to get fixed. And I'm not sure how we intend to do that, other than the chapters we're working on. There would, there will be public workshops scheduled and time to get input on that.
So I guess, if I heard what you're saying, if it's, if it's important enough for us to want to do something about making a change, if it, if it rises to that level, then we should bring that up as a future, a request for a future agenda item. If it's something that we think we can sort of wait for the public process to play out, we should do that.
Agree with that.
Okay. So I guess the other thing I would ask maybe as, as planning staff is at these meetings, it would, it would help us, as we mention some of those things, to maybe make a note of them. Because I think a lot of times, I'm speaking for me, but I think it applies, you know, we're, we see an item as we're reviewing a particular change or, you know, and we say, gosh, can you look at this when we make the change? And we probably don't make a note about it, although we should, but it would be really helpful. And I know I'm asking you to do our work for us, but, but it would be helpful as we get into those things, that you could sort of make a note of the things that we mentioned and maybe try and incorporate those when you hit those, that don't rise to the level of, the street thing to me is something I'd like to have addressed. I don't want to wait for that, because I think we're, you know, we're going through subdivisions and I'd like to get that, you know, reviewed sooner rather than later. So I'm not talking about that.
Yeah, and we-
Sorry, I rambled on there.
And we do, no, and we do. I mean, we have, we have a list of things that we are, know are concerns in these various codes. So we do hear that. And I know, because that's a public works issue, they are talking about the dedication of streets with, with every development. I know that's a top priority on their list to address too.
Okay.
So, that's something we can bring forward and address sooner than later.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You all right, Lee? Got enough to start? Public comment on this issue? Anybody want to weigh in? Denny, what do you want to say?
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada, mayor and board, thank you.
We're going to get a permanent chair for you pretty soon, Denny.
You might have to start making it rolling.
Put Denny French on the back of it, so that people know that they don't sit there. Only you sit there.
No, I like to keep moving, a little less target wise.
Okay.
Thank you. I think this is great. I'm looking forward to seeing how it works out. I think your suggestions are wonderful and, and as I've been trying to maneuver through it as awkwardly as I have, I've appreciated the help that I've received from everyone. So I'm looking forward to seeing this roll through. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Got enough, Lee? All right. Board members, we okay? Good discussion. Good discussion. Okay. Then let's close out this item. We'll take up item 18. This is a discussion and possible action regarding a business impact statement concerning a proposed ordinance amending Title 2 of the Carson City Municipal Code to impose an additional $6 fee on recording of certain documents. Is there anything you want to add, Aubrey, that's not in the staff report? You want to give us an overview of why, I mean, just go.
No.
All right.
But thank you.
So everything's in the staff report?
Yes, Ben and Max are here to actually present in more detail. Thank you.
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney for the record. I'm going to go over item 18A and 18B together as they're related. So this is a request to impose a $6 fee on the recording of most documents with the clerk recorder's office, based on legislation that the Nevada Legislature passed. Carson City has not previously imposed this fee. And it specifically goes towards funding legal services for abused and neglected children in the community. And we're hoping that by adopting this ordinance, we'll be able to offset a contract for legal services that Carson City has. Currently, I did a review of other counties. Churchill, Clark, and Washoe are currently the only counties that impose the full $6 fee. And then in, let's see, Douglas County, Line County, Persian County, all only adopt a $3 fee specifically for abused and neglected children. All the rest don't have that. They only have a fee that goes towards indigent legal services in general. A business impact statement was mailed out to certain groups, including the Carson City Downtown Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Nevada Realtors Association. A copy was also posted on the website and made available at the front counter whenever anyone came for services. To date, I don't believe that the city has received any responses indicating that it would have an adverse impact to business. And I'll turn it over to Max, so she can explain a little bit about the contract that we have with Washoe Legal Services that this would help offset.
That's who I was going to go to. Max, how are you doing?
Hi, good morning.
How's the third branch of government doing today?
Good, good.
All right.
Max Cortez, Court Administrator. The board approved the Washoe Legal Services contract in the board meeting of October 23rd of 2017. And that came because- And that came because the Legislature, um, passed laws that amended current laws that in adult guardianship cases, the protected person needed to, um, have legal representation in termination rights for the ch- children advocacy as well, for those children where their parent or parents' rights are being terminated, and for, um, children advocacy for the children who were abused and neglect in our 432B cases. So to date, we've had, um, 235 cases, um, appointed to Washoe Legal Services, and they are doing a great job. I can say, um, with all confidence and relay that the judges are very, um, pleased with their services. So it is working. Um, currently.
Did we get the situation worked out between, uh, the legal services folks and us on, with respect to guardianship matters?
Which situation?
Well, in other words, who makes the determination as to who needs help? Maybe I'm mis- misstating that to you, but, uh, I mean, I know Washoe Legal Services was taking a position that was pretty hard, that, um, where someone was a protected person, uh, and they were, they were a protected person, but they didn't have, uh, how do I say it? They, the, the Washoe Legal Services took a position that they really didn't, they didn't.
Didn't need the public guardian service.
Didn't need the public guardian service.
So, uh, I recollect, um, there are so many issues that come up in the court, so, um, I needed just a little bit more background. Thank you, um, Mayor. Um, yes, at the beginning of the, um, contract with Washoe Legal Services, there were issues. Um, some of it was, um, the, I believe, um, from what I was advised, is that there was some personality conflicts, um, with the attorneys that were representing Washoe Legal Services and frankly with that public guardian, uh, the former public guardian. So not the one that was just resigned, but the prior one. And so, um, I do know that the pendulum swung sometimes in legal, um, cases where that protected person's rights, they were very zealous protecting their rights. And so they were in court saying if the person said, no, I didn't want the services, they would stand up and represent with stating that, yes, um, they don't want the services. And so even though they needed the services, um, because they were performing their, what they believed was their due diligence and representing their clients, um, wants, um, sometimes those individuals may want something, um, at that moment, and five minutes later they may want something different, just depending on their mental, um, capacity. So, um, those issues did, um, in my understanding, get resolved. I also know that there was a lot of training because with new laws coming out, sometimes the training is not there, um, there's a lot of interpretation. And so really that legal representative who is protecting, who is, um, representing the protected person, really what is my role in, in the proceedings? And so I know that training was done, um, and so I think those things have worked out.
Very good. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. All right. All right. Anything further? Go shoot.
Uh, Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney. I just wanted to clarify one error that was in the staff report on 18B, um, that said that the contract with Washoe Legal Services ended next June. It's actually September 30th of 2020.
Okay.
And the ordinance, if adopted, would become effective January 1st.
Okay. Supervisor Jome.
Um, Max, just, uh, just for clarification, the, the cases that Washoe Legal Services handles for us under contract are still adjudicated here in Carson, correct? If, if they're, if they originate here, right?
Yes.
They don't take them to Washoe County there.
They're here.
They're all adjudicated here.
Yes.
Um, Aubrey, what's our current recording fee? Does it, does it differ for different documents?
No. So we have no fee documents that would come from the state or the county, but the flat recording fee is $25.
So this would make it $31?
Plus the, no, um.
Is it not? Is it in what you gave me?
So, no, there's a, the statute, SB 20.
I already printed it, so if you want to read that or get it again.
It'll go up to $43. So this legislative session, SB 20 passed, uh, a bill that mandates a $2 recording fee increase as well.
For what?
The six, per document.
And that $2 fee is for what?
For the same, for legal services.
Okay.
Stays at the state level.
Right. So that, that was mandated, that will take effect January 1st. The $6 increase will go to that same legal services.
Okay.
I'm just trying to coordinate.
So it'll be 33-ish.
It'll be 43.
Ish, okay.
43 per document.
And that's deeds, doesn't matter what the document is.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Lori, supervisor Barrett, sorry.
Well, I, I think that's really what I wanted to do is clarify on the record that the new fee that you're recommending for a January 1 implementation would be $6 that would remain here for us to pay the cost of the current contract, which is Washoe Legal Services, um, to help offset that. We spend more than the $6 we'll generate, correct? So we're spending $78,000,000 a year on the Washoe Legal Services contract, so this is only going to give us about $47,000 that the Legislature provided a fee and also mandated that we provide the service. So this was a new mandate that the Legislature said you have to do, and this is the fee source that they gave us to help offset half unfunded mandate now? Maybe they gave us a half? And then it also includes, though, the $2 that the Legislature did at the state level. So I just wanted to make sure everyone on the record understood what we're going to do with the money and what the fee and why we're looking at a fee increases because we got mandated services that we have to provide now for abused children and protected persons. Right? I just want to make sure I'm correct.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, that's correct.
That's correct. Um, the mandates came down in 2017. At that time, we did speak with, um, the former clerk recorder, and there was not a, um, appetite at that time to increase the fees.
Okay. Hang, hang on. Supervisor Barrett's got it. Can you, is this going along, that line of questioning right there?
It, it's one of the questions I had, but it's not the same line.
John had his light on here, so.
No, I defer to my senior fellow.
Well, your senior fellow just wants, your senior fellow just wants to be a wagon and asks if we should sunset this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, so, so my last question is, um, I, I assume we've made a decision to contract with Washoe Legal Services because it's, it's, we haven't?
I think we have.
We did.
Yeah, I know. I'm asking that we've made that decision to do that because it's more cost-effective than doing it ourselves. I just wanted to confirm that. I wasn't part of that decision, obviously, because I wasn't on the board. So I don't know if that's a DA question, a court question, a Nancy question?
So at the time that these, um, unfunded mandates came to, um, that were passed, um, we met with the State Public Defender's Office to see if they would, um, consider doing child advocacy work. And at that time, I spoke with Karen Kreisenbeck, and she said they had a plan, um, to do that. In preparation of the Board meeting, I reached back to her because they had not, um, to my knowledge, had not put something together. So I spoke with her and she said, um, they're not going to move forward with that. Um, at the time of the contract, um, we also spoke with Nevada Legal Services and they did submit a proposal, but it was $174,000, I believe, so substantially higher than Washoe Legal Services. And so that's why, um, the court, um, recommended the Board to approve the contract with Washoe Legal Services.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I also want to, um, let the Board know that that contract is ending September 30th of 2020, and we've already been in discussions with, um, the Director, James Conway, to, um, renegotiate that contract and, um, see if there's any way to reduce the contract. They do apply for grant funding, but I also know that they are, are really trying to, um, have services out to the rural counties as well.
Okay. To our senior member, did you, uh, want to weigh in?
You did already.
Okay. All right. All right. Uh, anything else? Anything?
Can I just add something? Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Where am I? Aubrey, go.
I just wanted to correct, you caught me off guard, Supervisor Jome. The recording fee is $35, not $25 currently.
Right. We got that.
Because the math wasn't working out for me. I have no math. Okay, thank you.
That's why I printed it.
All right. Anything else? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on this one? Washoe Legal Services, the only legal services in Northern Nevada, is that correct? I think it is.
Um, there is Nor- Nevada Legal Services.
Okay. All right. All right. Anybody else? We okay with moving off? This one and then taking up, well, we got to take a vote here. Um, let's make a motion on the business impact statement.
Okay.
I move to accept the business impact statement as prepared and find that the proposed ordinance does not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operations, or expansion of a business.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay, let's take up, uh, the companion, companion item that we already talked about to introduce on first reading an ordinance relating to recording fees and amending Title II of the Carson City Municipal Code to impose an additional $6 fee on recording certain documents with the clerk recorder's office with the proceeds estimated to be $47,000 or more, uh, supporting legal services for abused and neglected children. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
So bill number? Bill 110. 110?
I move to introduce on first reading bill number 110.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Discussion's in order.
Uh, so on this, um, I don't debate the need, uh, for legal services for abused and neglected children. However, I don't see the nexus between a fee for recording documents and the legal services. So, um, I am not going to be voting for this.
So we're on discussion, right?
Discussion.
So I, I agree with Supervisor Bonkowski that I'm not sure how the Legislature thought that this was the appropriate fee structure to collect for this activity. However, they did mandate that we provide a service, and this is the vehicle that they gave for us to pay for it. I 100% agree. I'm not sure how they hooked this up, but we need to provide the service and it's required, so I will support it, but.
Yeah, I, I don't, again, I don't debate that we have to supply the service. I just disagree that this is how we pay for it.
Okay. Any further discussion? On a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes four to one with Supervisor Bonkowski voting nay.
That's great.
Okay. We'll take a break for 10 minutes and then, uh, I think.
We're going to close, council, anyway.
Huh?
We're going to close meeting.
Yeah, we're going to go to closed meeting here. Do you want to?
Need a break.
All right. We'll take a break for 10 minutes and then we'll come back here, uh, and we're going to close the meeting for discussions with our, um, legal counsel, and we'll open it back up after that to take up item number 19. Okay, so we'll be in recess for 10 minutes. Is that enough time, John? Is that enough time, John?
In Alpha, this is discussion of possible action regarding whether to opt out of negotiating class, negotiation class established by the National Prescription Opia Litigation pending United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio Eastern Division. We had a closed meeting. We've heard from our district attorney. Want to take it from here? Woody's? Tell us what your recommendation is, or where you want to go.
Sure. Just based on the reasons, Jason Woodbury, Carson City District Attorney, based on the reasons that were offered during the closed session, it is the recommendation of my office as well as the recommendation of the law firm of Eglet Adams that we've engaged, that Carson City's engaged to represent our interests in this matter, would be our recommendation at this time that Carson City opt out of the negotiation class pending in the multi-district litigation in Ohio.
Okay. All right. Anybody interested in knowing more about that? I don't see anybody. Okay. Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on this one? Anybody? I know it's kind of difficult because it's somewhat of a complex legal question. Okay. Board, you ready?
I moved opt out in negotiation class and authorized the mayor to execute the exclusion request form.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed nay. Carried. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jason. All right. All right. Let's now take up item 20, Board of Supervisors, non-action items, future agenda items, all that there. Anybody got anything? Go.
So I just want to say that I had the pleasure of working with the Weebloes PAC 143 for their Good Governance and Citizenship Day. And Carson City is very lucky to have such fine young men in our community. They asked tough, hard questions. And I actually worked with them for assignment. And so I look forward to them even coming before the board. One of the Park and Recreation Commission questions that we've been having is whether we should allow smoking in the parks. And so I asked these dedicated little Weebloes to go to Mills Park and look for designated smoking areas and to come back with their thoughts and ideas to the Park and Rec Commission. So very excited to just report that they were great. And then I also represent us in the group that deals with Nevada Works. And we got a document. And I just thought I'd share a couple little things because it kind of surprised me of Carson City's agriculture at a glance. I don't think that many people recognize that Carson City's food and agriculture sector contributed $45 million to the state's economy in 2017. I think we forget that we have agricultural production here and just wanted to, and I'd be happy to share this if anyone's interested.
That's a good point. Because I forget it as well, you know. NMDA one time told me that agriculture is a big issue. And I think, wow, okay, maybe I've been, where? But now we see, okay. Stacy? Yep?
I wanted to ask based off of what Nico said, should we consider forming a complete count committee? Is that something we should?
A complete what?
Count committee, a census complete count committee. Is that something we should bring back to the future board meeting to at least contemplate? And if so, what that might look like?
Yeah, I know that Lee Plemel, Community Development Director, has been working on some sort of committee, and I'm not sure if that's what it is. But we can bring back something to the board to talk about that.
Maybe you should have Lee come back and tell us where they are on the census because I know he's the designated person here. Let's have him come and talk to us. And we can explore whether or not we should have our own designated count or certified count.
Committee or whatever to help. I mean, the point of the committees is that you encourage people to step up. And it, you know, I think in our community, it probably means doing some outreach to the Hispanic community, which typically tends to avoid that count. And, you know, probably reaching out to the homeless community who tend to not get counted. But we know that numbers mean dollars. And I don't want to leave, you know, federal money on the table that could come our way because we're missing, you know, a couple of thousand people.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
Nancy?
So I know I'm usually pretty quiet during this section, but we actually have a lot of great things to update the board and the public on. So I think it was last meeting the board had asked for an update on Capital City Liquidators. They are currently in compliance with the outside storage with the area limitations from that. We had the six-month agreement with them that went through October of 2019. So they're currently in compliance with that. Any new violations would start the code enforcement or the business license enforcement process all over again. I just want to remind everyone, the first annual Mayor's Arts Awards will be held next Friday, November 15th, at the Gold Dust West from 11:30 to 1:00. The keynote speaker is Heather Harmon, who's the Deputy Director for the Nevada Museum of Art. Plus, there's going to be a special announcement by the Nevada First Lady, Kathy Sisalak. And tickets can be purchased at carsoncitychamber.com. And $5 from each ticket is going to be donated to the city's Department of Arts and Culture. We have a tumbleweed update next Tuesday. The Anderson Ranch Field is going to be mowed. That should take care of the current issues. And then we're going to be working with the property owners to work on a long-term plan, you know, going forward so that we don't have those issues again.
Stephanie, are you going to reach out to those folks that have been in contact and just let them know that?
Yes, absolutely. We can let them know that that's the scheduled date.
A quick email would be great. Thank you very much.
And Stephanie has an update on the hospital, the Medical Parkway property.
Thank you. I'm pleased to inform you that Carson Tahoe Hospital has made a fair market value offer to us. That was the $905,000 for the two parcels off of Medical Parkway. So we are currently working with them to bring a purchase agreement back to the board. It should probably be back to you in December. And then we will finalize the sale of that property.
So will you, at the same time, bring an item forward for the allocation in the funds?
Correct. Yes, that is the plan. We are prepared and ready to bring that item at the same time.
All right. So I know I stand between you and lunch, but we have a quick update on the rifle and pistol range.
No, don't worry about it. Those were.
All right. All right. There's lots of words in this presentation, but a lot's happened over the last year. So in March of 2019, the city submitted a $28,000 grant request to the Nevada Department of Wildlife for improvements at the range. And that was at the direction of the Range Task Force. In April of 2019, we added public shooting evening hours on Tuesdays through Fridays with City Park Ranger RSOs. That was also at the direction of the Range Task Force. Also, that month, the board approved $250,000 for rifle range safety improvements as part of the fiscal '20 capital improvement program. In July, we implemented the interim operating plan that was approved by the board in June. In October, Endow notified us, I think it was a little earlier than that, that there was additional funding available. And so we actually resubmitted the grant based on engineer's estimates. And we increased the request to $132,237, with $44,000 as a city match. And that would be for improvements to the shooting bays, signage, and removal of concrete target frames on the long range. On October 5th, and Jennifer Budge could probably elaborate more on this, but the Parks Department, the Sheriff's Office, and CTA staff toured the Sacramento Valley Shooting Range. On October 18th, the agreement between the Carson Rifle and Pistol Club and Carson City expired. So at that point, the city took on overall operations and including range reservations and the ranged safety officer duties. October 29th, our new range coordinator, Mike Evans, started. His current schedule is Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 to 5:00.
7:00 to 5:00 or 8:00 to 5:00?
8:00 to 5:00. Did I put seven? 8:00 to 5:00. All right. So this month, on November 3rd, we implemented winter hours due to the daylight savings time and it getting dark at 5:00. And then just yesterday, we received notice that Endow has awarded us the grant. And next week, we will be releasing bids for the improvements, which include shooting bays and the short range. So just to add some numbers into the presentation, the short range estimate is $146,750. And the shooting bays is $158,960. I think Jen might have an update on some of those numbers. Okay. So because this is a federal grant, the bids have to be out for 30 days. And so the next meeting, we'll be presenting to the board, we'll bring to the board, the grant award from Endow for approval. And then January 2nd, 2020, we're hoping to present to the board the consideration of the award of the bid. And then construction is anticipated to be about six to eight weeks, weather permitting. And the entire range would be closed off for that period of time. Post-construction, public shooting opportunities at the shooting bays and the short range will increase to six days a week. The long range will still only be available outside of landfill operating hours until improvements can be made on that range. And staff is continuing to work with Endow to apply for improvements of the long range. And that will be for the next fiscal year. And the match on that would be 10%. We also wanted to recognize the Carson Rifle and Pistol Club. They provided 602 hours of volunteer labor with range safety officers. And that has a value of about $15,000 to the city. We're continuing to work with BLM on long-term relocation of the range once the landfill is built out, which is in approximately 15 years. And they're currently looking at the BLM land north of Centennial Park. And we'll be doing some onsite visits of this area with the stakeholders. Just some stats, the average public attendance at the range on Sundays is 80 to 100 participants. And Tuesday through Friday evenings, before the time change, were about 10 to 15 participants. And just an update on some of the policies, we've updated, we're updating the standard operating procedures, and those should be completed within the next two weeks. The range reservation policies are being updated, and a draft should be ready for Parks and Rec Commission for their next meeting in February. And we've also worked on frequently asked questions for the rifle and pistol range, and that should be on the city's website by the end of this week. And with that, I have Jen here. And I think she's going to introduce our new range coordinator.
And Nancy, how much money is left in contingency? It's about 400, 350, 400?
353, something like that.
Oh, do you mean in the Capital Projects Fund? I think it was about 300. It's around $300,000?
And Jen, is these three budget estimates, were they done individually? Or were these done assuming that all the work on all three projects would be done at the same time? So my real question is, is there any synergy in having mass grading done on the short range and the long range at the same time? Is there a savings?
Thank you, Supervisor Poncausi. Mayor Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. Previously, we went out and received quotes for just the shooting bays. We had that portion of the design and engineering plans we asked for first because it was the easiest, from an engineering standpoint, to construct. We've received quotes, the low quote was $143,000. It was a really difficult time of year, in my opinion, to bid in the middle of the summer, when most contractors, small or large, already have their schedule for the season. So I think going into the winter is going to be better timing for us because it's a slower time of year for that. But also adding the short range onto it, I think will be better because they're already going to be mobilized. There's a lot of earthwork. I mean, 90% of the projects, whether it's one range or all three ranges, is earthwork and primarily civil engineering design. Obviously, if we had all three to bid, I think we would probably get our best bang for our buck because it's a larger project and a larger profit for our company. But these were created in mind to be able to have the opportunity to bid them separately or together. So we will have, excuse me, in our bid packet, a really defined start and end point on the plan set because the plan set is for the entire range. But we will be able to bid out sections.
Yeah. So I agree with Brad in terms of the question. I mean, because you're looking at mobilization on the long range being 40 grand. And in theory, once you mobilize, you mobilize. You shouldn't have to, I mean, so if we can bring those costs down and take advantage of some of that, I wouldn't be against using some of that capital contingency to, you know, get this cost down and get closer to finishing the whole thing and being done with it. Yes. So it'd be great if we could consider that.
And we have, I think that's a great approach. And we have identified a little bit of an add-on consideration for what we're going to put out to bid next week, which is, it's hard because it's mostly earthwork. So it's really hard to pull a section out. But we're looking at, on the short range, looking at that eight-foot block wall that would be between the short range and the long range. And that's basically for protections when you're on the short range or when they're you on the long range. Because where the berm's in, we don't have any, you know, conflicts between the two ranges. So that's an easy add-on because it's something that kind of stands out a little bit differently. We don't want to not be able to award and get this work done on the ground.
But in that process, I don't know if Brad's suggesting this, if you add, for the long range, you know, the mass grading and the range floor backstop import material as an alternative, maybe we can get that part of the long range done at the same time.
Okay. I can sit down with Public Works and see if there's some items we could add. And if we consolidate as much as possible. I've been operating off of that $250,000 budget and just trying to leverage every penny that we can and trying to get the most bang for our buck. I will say that the long range is probably the most in demand next to the shooting base. But the short range obviously is a little bit less available. And our goal is, once the physical improvements are made, obviously the range evaluations that we had identified, operational challenges and physical challenges, you know, our goal is to get public shooting opportunities increased. So everybody has the same goal here. And that's what we want to see.
Yeah, I would actually, I would actually take it a step further and say what I'm specifically saying would be, my preference would be to put all three ranges out to bid to see what the savings would be in mobilization and mass grading, import material. It seems like there's an opportunity for a lot of savings if we do all three at the same time. And based on that information, then bring it back to the board and let us make a decision on whether we're going to come up with the money.
You want to introduce our new folks?
Yes, thank you. I'm really pleased to introduce Mike Evans. He's our new range coordinator. He comes from the Sportsman Warehouse. He is a manager there, has a lot of experience on dealing with consumer side, purchasing ammunition, purchasing firearms. He's educated and taught youth how to safely operate firearms. He's a certified ranged safety officer. He was also on the Wildlife Advisory Board. So he understands the side of things and how important, you know, our process and involving the public is. He's also very actively involved with the Mule Deer Foundation and doing restoration of site as well. So we're happy to have him.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, pleased to meet you guys. Again, I believe I did my interview with you for Wildlife Advisory Board. Yeah, a little bit about myself, Jen kind of touched on a couple of them. I've worked for Sportsman Warehouse for eight years. Avid outdoorsman, big into like the shooting sport, shooting aspect of everything, hunting. I am involved with the Capital City Mule Deer Foundation, and I'm the chairman. We that organization two years ago. And yeah, I'm excited to have this opportunity and work with the city and the community on getting the range back open.
Very good. Very good. Well, if you have any spare time, take care of the deer and the bears and the mountain lions.
Will do.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I left that purposely vague. Because I, you know, whatever. Okay. All right. Who has another one?
Well, and just a comment, since we're just in the public discussion part, is not to forget that one of the things in the Range Task Force that we had done is to allow any of those wonderful organizations out there that are avid for hunting, shooting, et cetera, that might like to donate into this fund to help us get it open so we can do everything would be wonderful. Because remember, we did all the pricing for them to get signage and things. So what a great opportunity that we put that out. And be sure and use that as one of your frequently asked questions is how do I help do this and things like that so that we can take care of it in the initial opening opportunity. So I don't want to miss that because maybe Sportsman Warehouse says, hey, I want to have $10,000 and put my name as the top one on the, especially on that great sign, the first one that everyone's going to see. So, no pressure. Somebody, somebody might want it.
John?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who's involved in this from Brad and Lori on our board, through all the staff. And I would ask, if it hasn't already been done, that Jen, you or somebody thanked the heck out of the task force of volunteers who came in. And welcome aboard, young man. Do a good job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
This is one of the best things I've ever seen happen in our Democratic, which sometimes is a mess. But this one, it started out as a mess and it's really been cleaned up as well as we could, I think.
I think we should have a party when it's all done.
A ribbon cutting.
A ribbon cutting out there.
Hosting.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Nancy? Anybody? Well, I have one thing, just one. I have, I'll be attending the National Convention of the League of Cities. Unfortunately, it overlaps the next board meeting. So I will be, my apologies, you're up again. I don't have any choice. I've got two more months. You know, I filled in as an interim president. We've had a lot of different things going on, including the search for a new executive director. But I think it's important that I go show the Nevada folks, you know, that they've got good leadership around here. So Lori, you're back up on that one. I don't know why I can't get out of these things, man. But I've got two more months of it, then I'm done. Okay. Anybody got anything else? Time for concluding public comment. See, I got that one that time, Dan. Anybody? Denny? Any concluding public comment? We got your chair up here.
Uh-oh.
Oh, I didn't mean to ask that. Just say thanks.
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. Mayor and board, stop picking on me. No, seriously, I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you very much.
You bet, Denny. Okay. All right. Are we ready to be done? Any further public comment? Going once, twice, three times? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Unless there's an objection, we are adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting.